Good evening. I'd like to call to order the August tenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the Newburgh Planning Commission. And open with a roll call.
Darren Capri here. Laney Quinn here, Jason Dale.
Here.
Mike Griffiths.
Here.
Linda Newton Curtis.
Yeah.
Chris Wright.
Here.
Jeff Musso.
Here.
Avery Hansen is absent.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll just like to take a moment and ask if there are any public comments for items. Not on the agenda, meaning anything not related to anything we're speaking to tonight. If there's anyone that has a quick comment, please let me know. Okay, seeing none, let's move on to the consent calendar. We do have three sets of minutes here, but if no one has any objections or changes, we can approve them in bulk. If someone wants to.
Chris Wright motion. Uh, to approve planning commission meeting minutes for six eight twenty twenty-three, six twenty-two, twenty-three. And seven thirteen twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Uh, thank you. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, the motion passes, so moving on. Our first item up today is a quasi judicial public hearing. It is for M A M D three twenty-three dash zero zero one. And M I S C one two three dash zero zero nine calling for major modification. Of C U P dash two dash ninety for shelter to add eight additional beds. A design review for an accessory modular building and parking determination at six fifteen. North College Street. At this time, I'd like to ask for any um. Abstentions by us, export take contact or objection to jurisdiction from anyone?
Uh, this is Commissioner Newton Curtis. I live within about five hundred feet of the facility, but I won't allow that to um. Impact my vote or judgment.
Commissioner Wright, I'm a previous client of Love Inc. and Y Cap. I attended a community forum at Red Hills Church and homeless issues in Newburgh this July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Three at Red Hills Church. I will not let it impede my decision in this matter.
Mister Chair, I live within uh probably a thousand feet of this facility, but uh. Until this matter was before, so I wasn't even aware of its existence, so I don't think it's going to affect my decision making.
Okay, thank you all. At this time, let's move over to um staff report. And the reading of the. Um, statement.
Thank you, Mister Chair. So O R S one ninety-seven, seven ninety-seven requires certain statements be made at the commencement of a public hearing. The applicable city and state zoning criteria must be listed. This means that we must advise you of the standards that must be satisfied by the applicant prior to our approval or denial of an application. And planning staff will list the applicable criteria during his or her presentation of the staff report. Persons wishing to participate in this hearing must direct their testimony to the evidence toward. The criteria stated by the planner or specific city or state criteria which you believe apply. You must tell us why the testimony or evidence relates to the criteria. Any issue which might be raised in an appeal of this land. Of this case to the land use sport of appeals, Luba. Must be raised in person or by letter at the local level prior to the city approving or denying the application. The law states that the issue must be raised in enough detail to afford the decision maker in the parties. An opportunity to respond. This part of the law is known as the raise it or waive it requirement. If you do not bring it up now, you cannot bring it up at Luba. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating. To propose conditions of approval in enough detail to allow the local government or designate need to respond to the issue recludes an action for damages in circuit court. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing on an application. Any applicant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The planning commission will grant such a request through a continuance or extension of the record.
Thank you, Doug, and now the final staff report.
Well, if you don't mind, Ca- Commissioners, I'm just gonna stay right here. Alright, um, so what we have before you tonight. Is a major modification of C U P uh dash. Two dash ninety uh for shelter to added eight additional beds, which would bring the facility up to twenty-four beds, a design review for an accessory modular building and a parking determination. As the chair had indicated, the cases are M A M D three twenty-three dash zero 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 two and M I S C one twenty-three dash zero 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 nine. Like to begin by entering the entire staff report into the record. Next slide, please. Oh, there it is. Alright, so the applicant is Debbie Cleek with the booking group. Uh, the owner is Y Cap. The request again, as I already mentioned, is a major modification to a previously approved conditional use. Uh, the site is located at six fifteen North College Street. Uh, the zoning is R two, which is medium density residential and the condition, uh, conditional use permit criteria apply. Which is a type three. So here we've got. Three pieces to this, but it's the highest review case, which is the conditional use. Modification, so all three are bundled together and brought forward to the planning commission. Here's the site at the corner of College and Vermillion, so it's outlined in red. Uh, these are some photos of the structure, so the one on your left is taken from College Street. Uh, the one in the center at the bottom is from Vermillion Street, and then the upper right is also from Vermillion Street. And that one's looking at the parking area. So this is the site plan that's in your packet, and so it shows the existing structure. Um, over to the far left is where the proposed modular building would be located. Uh, provide services and the applicant will provide you more additional information. Wait. Wait for it. Come on, um. You can see at the north of the drawing is Vermillion Street. To the right of the drawing is is College Street. The parking is located off of Vermillion, so that would be up at the kind of the northern portion of the property itself. So fifteen point two two five oh six oh A, location, size and design and operating characteristics are reasonably compatible. So again, the sites at six fifteen North College, it's owned R two. Uh, in nineteen ninety-five, this site was rezoned to R two. By ordinance number ninety-five, twenty-three, ninety-six, and it used to be zoned M two, so it was industrial, had a home on it at that time. Size of the side is about seven thousand sixty-three square feet. Uh, thirty-three hundred square foot building, and then there's the proposed modular, which is four hundred and ninety-seven square feet in size. Continuing with A, design and operating characteristics. So there are conditions that are listed in your staff report, so you have all of the findings and this PowerPoint kind of go through more of what the conditions of approval are identified. So there needs to be a minimum ten foot wide landscape buffer provided between the new parking area and the property line to the west. And that landscape buffer should retain and replace the existing plant material on the site. The, for the parking area in combination with existing driveway should be no greater than forty feet in width. Uh, the remaining front yard area should remain landscaping, so that's from that parking area, that drawing, if you went to the right going towards College Street, that would remain as landscaping. Uh, landscaping and parking plan should be submitted to the city for review and approval based upon the conditions of approval that are recommended in your staff report. Uh, a continued, uh, this is increasing the capacity. By eight or nine beds, and so there was some different stuff that was in the application, but the end number resulted in twenty-four. Harmony and scale, the accessory building is similar to other accessory buildings in size, this part of. Newburgh, there are a lot of accessory structures, a lot of the homes were built, didn't have garages, later garages were added. Uh, sheds, storage sheds and so forth were also added. Uh, again, that modular building is four hundred and ninety-seven square feet in size. It's one story. It's thirteen feet, eight inches, eight and a half inches in height. And uh, the existing home. Its bulk and character are similar to other structures in this residential area. Then the coverage and density. Um, so they're gonna have to comply with the provisions that are up on the screen, so fifteen, four oh five oh five oh B one B. Uh, B one two and B one three. Um, and so we do have those density requirements depending upon if it's a one-story, two-story home with your parking coverage. And they'll have to ensure that they comply. For B. Uh, location and design and site planning of proposed development provides convenient and functional living and working and shopping. Well, this is not a shopping proposal. Uh, it's not a civic environment proposal. But we, again, we've gone through and identified location at six fifteen North College. And that the site was rezoned R two in the past. Design, the module structural will accommodate two private consultation rooms and a meter room. That will be used for counseling, case management and clinical appointments. The module will have a restroom and connected to water and wastewater systems. Uh, the shed is proposed to be removed from the site. And an ADA ramp will be provided to the, or ADA accessibility will be provided to that new modular structure. For site planning, um. Again, the location design site plan, the proposed development provides a convenient and functional. Uh, living location or operational location. I think it's important to note that this is a community services facility. So it falls under the institutional and public category of our code in our table. Um. Under C, proposed development will be consistent with this code, so the findings relating to site design, standards and public improvements are provided in the staff report. Uh, we've listed out. Uh, the various co- sections within the development code. Uh, and I won't read through all of those because I don't want to bore you with all of the fifteen point somethings. Uh, that apply to this particular application, but it's on the screen, it's also in your staff report. Permits and certificates, the sidewalks along both fringes are not in compliance with the City of Newburgh Public Works and. Design and construction standards, and there will be conditions of approval uh to make sure that those are in compliance. Uh, for the design review on the parking determination. And that's again, it's a, that's a portion of it is type one. Um, the design review portion is a type one, the condition lease modification is a type three. Uh, there are conditions on lot coverage calculations, identifying existing proposed building setbacks from the interior yards. There's one on condition on placement of fencing that is proposed, and then conditions on street treats. Uh, for the design review, there's a condition to underground new utilities, I need to make this clear, that's new utilities that go to the new modular, not to the existing structure. Um, there are findings in your staff report based upon information provided by the applicant. That they do not have to underground the existing service to the existing structure. Um, there's a condition of no RVs or sleeping in vehicles on the site. Um, the site would be required to have four off-street parking spaces. There's again, conditions on the ADA compliant walkways. A lot of that is on the south side of the structure, that's the ADA accessible ramp that comes in the backside, and so that will need to meet ADA requirements. Uh, one on stormwater management, if there is over five hundred square feet of new impervious surface area. And when you look at the drawing, there's actually paving bricks, so those are not impervious, water does flow through those. Uh, conditions on public sidewalks and the driveway for their construction. Uh, condition on the planter strip along East Vermillion Street, so that would be an extension of that. And then a condition for erosion control permit. For uh, any activities, and so if a site is disturbing under one acre, it's a city permit, if it's over one acre, it's a department environmental quality, in this case, it's under one acre. Uh, I should note, there was a supplemental that went out on Monday, hopefully you all received that and so forth. There is a a bill that was passed, and the reason why we sent this out is so that you were aware. So House Bill two thousand and six, which was passed by the legislature in twenty twenty-one. Under section three of that. Um, and I won't read everything in its entirety, but I'll read the first component of it, this is a local government shall approve an application for the development. Or use of land for an emergency shelter as defined in section two. Uh, of this twenty twenty-one act on any property notwithstanding O R S chapters one ninety-five, one ninety-seven, one ninety-seven, eight, two fifteen, or two twenty-seven, or any statewide planning rule. Of the Land Conservation and Development Commission or Local Land Use Regulation, Zoning Ordinance, Regional Framework Plan, Functional Plan or Comprehensive Plan. If the shelter provides, and then there's a list of um. A through. A through F. And then uh subsection two. A and B and then subsections under that, and so we've looked at all of those and what's being proposed is that, and so I think the key to that is that language is that you shall, we've. Reviewed it and recommended conditions of approval to ensure that it's in compliance with our local regulations for. Design review. And uh, make sure they have adequate parking. So with that, staff's recommendation is to approve order number twenty twenty-three dash twelve. M A M D three twenty-three zero 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 two, major modification to C U P. Two dash ninety, including design review, parking determination with conditions of approval in exhibit B.
Uh, thank you, Doug, and now we're going to move on to a public testimony. I just outlined a couple of things, we'll have the applicant come up. And they'll be allowed fifteen minutes to speak. At to which time, uh, we'll turn it over for public comments, and those will be limited to five minutes each. And I have asked Commissioner Dale to keep time, so he'll let you know when you're coming up on the. The time boundary there. And like I said, um, comments be kept on topic with what we're discussing. And Commissioners will be allowed to um ask questions of any. On anyone making comment, so this time I'd like to invite the applicants to come forward. Uh, please come up to the desk and then state your name for the record.
Make sure you press the silver button there. But alright, great, thank you. Hi, um, uh, my name is Debbie Cleek, I'm the applicant on the um project, I'm a land use planner. I just want to thank staff for the report and for the commission for hearing this case this evening. Um, as Doug described, it's a small project to add a less than five hundred square foot modular building onto the site. And increase the bed capacity to help the, to address the homeless population needs in Newburgh. Um, and I'll pass it along to Alexandria Hedgen, the executive director of the Yamhill Community Action Partnership. Um, she'll talk about the history and background of Y Cap and this project and describe the services that will be provided in the facility. And we have.
Thank you again for your time this evening. My name is Alexandra Hengen, I'm the executive director at Y Cap. Um, and tonight, uh, we want to walk through a couple of slides with you just to describe kind of our history in the community and what we're looking at with this project. Um, as a. I'm not good with that. As a community action agency, our mission is to advocate for people in need by providing access to resources and tools to strengthen communities in Yamhill County. Um, these are our low-income neighbors um that are facing barriers of poverty. Um, since nineteen eighty, we have been offering four core services that includes youth outreach. Uh, energy services, uh, serving as the regional food bank and then a housing stabilization department. So this evening, uh, we'll be focusing on the housing side of what Y Cap does. Um, and what our request is about, uh, and that's Y Cap's Newburgh Shelter Site. So our Newburgh Shelter Site has been in operation since nineteen ninety. Um, before I start with shelter, I want to let the commission know that Y Cap also provides more than shelter. So we have a broad systemic approach to address issues of homelessness. Uh, in Yamhill County that include programs that are really focused on preventing homelessness. And being incorporated into a continuum of services across multiple service providers. Um, we've listed a few examples here of rental assistance, which is something that ballooned during COVID, where we added six million dollars to that program to support. Folks in Yamhill County remaining housed. Uh, we do emergency motelling and we onboarded a turnkey program of non-congregate motelling, uh, non-congregate shelter. Uh, we coordinate communication with a shelter collaborative, which is outreach to every provider in Yamhill County who's operating some form of shelter. We are a member of Built for Zero, which is a national collaborative on ending homelessness and getting to a functional zero. Where we um have measured outcomes and support to get to more people exiting homelessness in our county than are entering into homelessness. Uh, we have several uh HUD-funded programs and programs funded through Oregon Housing and Community Services. And in twenty fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, we did steward over seven million dollars in direct client assistance without direct staffing causes, costs. While prevention is um a large part of our work, um, we already know that there are folks experiencing homelessness now. Um, so that brings us to the conversation about shelter and a shelter transition to a navigation center. Um, you've already heard briefly about House Bill two zero zero six, so in response to that. Y Cap has been undergoing plans across all of our shelters here in Newburgh and in McMinnville. Um. To move families more quickly out of homelessness, so instead of a revolving door shelter, Y Cap is working to develop stronger pathways to housing from our shelters. Uh, in Yamhill County, less than twenty-five percent of individuals who go through a typical shelter make it to a stable housing situation or permanent housing situation. Um, but for example, in Y Cap's turnkey program, which you'll hear a little bit about tonight, we have been able to house up to seventy-five percent. Um, coming into a non-congregate shelter that is more highly resourced and create a pathway to stable or permanent housing. This is local data, it's from our H M I S and coordinated entry system, this is not data from outside of Yamhill County, so we have been watching this. Uh, with the turnkey program over the last two years and recognize that the supports at this site. Um, those who are experiencing homelessness in Yamhill County are responding to it, it is successful for them. Um, a couple core components at the heart of this success. Um, this is a high resource shelter model that's focused on evidence-based quality services. Um, within the shelter model, there is daytime access designed to provide ongoing basic need support. And there are trauma-informed and trained paid staff onsite daily to connect individuals with available resources. Uh, one thing that we also put in here just to note is that in between shelter programming and programs like the turnkey program. Uh, Y Cap does maintain a motelling model, which is again, non-congregate, and we can prioritize specific households to be placed there. When a navigation center or a turnkey program may not be the right fit. Knowing that these shelter changes are significant uh and would impact our community, we did participate in um engagement activities. Um, over the last several months and even beginning last year, uh, we wanted to share a few of those with you this evening. Um, the Y Cap Housing Initiative Director uh did visit neighbors living closest to the property, going door to door and seeking meetings in their homes. Myself and the Housing Initiative Director held a special meeting with neighbors we knew that were being impacted by onsite construction. Uh, Y Cap leadership presented information on all of our housing stabilization services and the full scope of this project to. Um, the Newburgh, Newburgh City Mayor and a city councillor in a two-hour meeting. Um, when we first found out that these projects were funded, we did see conversations with leadership in McMinnville and Newburgh and secured. Assigned MOU with the City of Newburgh, the City of McMinnville and Y Cap, understanding that there was a focus on enhancing shelter and access to more. Resources on those shelter sites. Uh, Y Cap leadership also held an additional meeting with the Newburgh Mayor and the city manager to answer all questions concerning. Uh, the shelter site here in Newburgh, its operations and what the future of it would look like. Uh, Y Cap also recently participated, it was already mentioned tonight, in Community Conversations Forum on Homelessness a couple of weeks ago. Um, this does not include the follow-up meetings we've had with neighbors, uh, and the, the one-on-one follow-up meetings and phone calls that we have done as more inquiries have come in since this initial round of engagement. We did provide some additional questions, which I think the commission has copies of with a little bit more detail about those meetings, I think it was one of, it was one of the questions, so there's a little bit more information in there. So the navigation center, as part of addressing some of the concerns we learned through this process, um, we listened to a lot of the feedback uh about facility hours, management. Oversight at the property, so this major modification request is also designed to address concerns uh in the following ways. Y Cap staff will resume all day center and shelter activities onsite. Uh, with Y Cap employees utilizing the new modular for the offices and meeting space that was described. Uh, Y Cap's priority is maintaining health and safety for the community through extensive uh staff training and robust operating procedures. Behavioral health resource network agencies will be available for referrals for individuals with mental health and substance use disorders. The day center and overnight shelter will operate seven days a week. And individuals will be able to receive onsite case management and partner resources, um, again, with the objective to help them move more quickly out of the shelter, not remaining there. And find a pathway for their unique scenario to stable and permanent housing. Um. Again, in that additional packet with the questions that came out today, there is a section that describes our extensive policies with which we have over twenty. Um, that we implement within our shelter operations historically and currently, including termination policy, grievance policy, pet policy, good neighbor policy, so if you. Have that in your um hand, you can see more information there. Um, the next slide, uh, just wanting to say that partnerships are critical with Y Cap and at the heart of what we do. Um, so we've listed here some examples of how we have been able to leverage so many resources into Yamhill County specifically around housing uh in the last two years. Uh, the partnerships listed on the screen are current and active partnerships. Um, and we do have support and commitments from them to stand behind housing and shelter supports in the years to come. Next slide. Um, so in conclusion, uh, with the State of Oregon House Bill two zero zero six and House Bill forty fifty-one. Uh, it was very clear the creation of navigation centers um have. Clear processes, requirements and operation um oversight uh for the enhanced services for people experiencing homelessness, so in response to that. All of Y Cap shelters, including this Newburgh site, um. Are undergoing these changes, and at this site. I just want to recap, we're adding for a modular for sustained multiple onsite staff offices and a meeting space, so you be utilized both by Y Cap staff. And partners through the agencies you've seen in the, the Burn Network. And we are asking for an increase in occupancy up to twenty-four more, um. Up to twenty-four to serve more individuals in need in Newburgh. Uh, we believe this transition is going to again, address a lot of. The issues of staff oversight, neighborhood concerns raised in the last few years, and it will also qualify the shelter for future funding um to be. In the community to provide more services in Newburgh. Um, Y Cap has managed an active shelter in Newburgh for several decades. Northwest Christian Church. Has been a key partner of ours at this specific shelter since the early nineteen nineties. Um, Pastor Case was unable to attend tonight, but he did ask us to read a letter of support uh into the record, which I also believe you have a copy of. So I'm gonna pass it off to Laverne Pitts, our development director, to share that letter.
Hello, yes, my name is Laverne Pitts, I'm the development director at Y Cap. I'm here to read a. Uh, Pastor Case's letter into the record. On behalf of Northwest Christian Church, I offer this letter as a means of support and affirmation regarding the good work Y Cap is doing in Newburgh and throughout Yamhill County. Whether that work involves assisting with food, shelter, youth outreach or cost of energy, the resources, staff. And programs of Y Cap provide an essential role in serving and advocating for the people in need. Northwest Christian Church has been on the ground floor with some of these shared programs and projects. We've had a great partnership over the years. We helped with the Harvest House from the beginning. We participated in many projects there, painting, remodeling, adopting rooms, food, working with the various program directors over the years. We're offer, we were also privileged to partner together as Kate Stokes was getting Yo established. They used our gym numerous times. All of that is to say, as a pastor of a local church, the past forty years, I have seen the positive impact of Y Cap's work firsthand. Whether that be through direct observation, a story shared, or through the many ways we have partnered to serve those facing significant challenges. I've also had the privilege of serving on the Y Cap board, allowing me to observe the leadership directly and play a small role in assuring the resources of this agency. Are used to create the biggest impact possible. Alexandra and her team are doing a fantastic job and bring a tangible expression of help and hope to those needing it most in our communities. They're also a great partner to work with and have been a huge help in supporting our work and helping feed the hungry and providing relief services during natural disasters. Like the fires that hit us in twenty twenty or during the COVID pandemic. Under their continued generous servant leadership, I look forward to the completion of the renovations currently underway at Harvest House. I'm encouraged that we will be able to expand the number of beds available and services will be better accessed here in Newburgh. I'm encouraged that we will be able to expand the number of beds available and services will be better accessed here in Newburgh. I believe the YCAP team will do a great job continuing to serve those in need until the facility is completed. It is with these things in mind, we look forward to our continued partnership with YCAP and our work to serve the Newburgh community and continue to make Newburgh a great place to grow.
Well, thank you. Uh, do any commissioners have questions?
This is Commissioner Newton Curtis. I'm wondering if you can um expand on the definition of what the turnkey program and the navigation programs are. If you can explain a little more about those. Thanks.
I'd be happy to do that. Um, I will start with the turnkey program first because that's already in operation. Uh, during uh the COVID pandemic, uh YCAP was called upon to start doing emergency motelling, um, especially for those on the street who were medically vulnerable. So we worked with Health and Human Services and countywide partners um to secure hotel rooms and come up with a screening for the most vulnerable. And we thought we would be doing that for ninety days and it turned into a year and a half of motelling. Um, it was non-congregate, different than a typical shelter in Yamhill County. They had access to basic need support, food and case manager during that time. Um, and through that year and a half, we realized that we were hitting about seventy-two percent of these folks making transitions during a pandemic into a housing situation through our programs or through partner programs. Um, the state of Oregon uh received funding that ended up going to the Oregon Community Foundation for what they called Project Turnkeys, which was acquiring motels um and turning into them, turning them into shelter operations um in different communities around Oregon. YCAP along with Providence applied for that opportunity. And uh we initially looked for hotels here in Newburgh, unable to secure one of the four hotels we toured. We were able to find one uh in McMinnville that was a previous motel six uh and in partnership, we acquired that and started operating a more formalized non-congregate motelling program. Uh, it has capacity up to fifty-five rooms. Um, currently, we're operating thirty. We've operated up to forty, but with an old building, we've had some electrical complications and thirty is where we can sit at the moment. It is low barrier, non-congregate sheltering, so equal access. Again, we do vulnerability screenings to prioritize families medically vulnerable, veterans, things of that nature. Um, but if someone comes in with complications related to mental health or struggling with chemical dependency, as long as they follow the guidelines, the policy procedures, and they're not a danger to sell for others, uh they come into the shelter program. They are uh guaranteed a thirty-day stay within shelter as long as they follow those rules and engage with a housing case manager to start creating a plan um towards housing for themselves and their family. So it's very individualized on what those barriers and needs might be. If they engage in that process as a participant in the program, they then move forward, can extend their shelter stay and continue to work towards housing. And again, that has been stable at a seventy-two to seventy-five percent success rate for the individuals in that program. Uh, with that experience, uh as we were onboarding that, we heard news uh that navigation center funding would be coming to the city of McMinnville. And we started looking into the definitions as these house bills were rolled out and what that would look like. And essentially, that would look like taking our shelters and implementing several of the um types of supports we already had in the turnkey program, but at a night-by-night shelter. And so the navigation centers, um, we proposing will include three components. It will have the night-by-night shelter, typically eight to eight, um, where they will have access to a meal coming meal going out and a safe place to sleep. It is low barrier and as long as they follow the property rules and not are not a danger to sell for others, they will be able to stay. Um, addition, in addition to the shelter component, we will have a day center access. It will function also as an emergency warming and cooling shelter as needed throughout the year. But that day center access is geared towards um getting basic need support such as laundry, shower, using a restroom. Often what we see, those who experience homelessness, um trying to access at public businesses or in public spaces such as the library. During this daytime hour space, we will have trained staff, so they can have further conversations. They will be able to be screened for coordinated entry, homeless services, and find out what their needs are if they would like to advance to more intensive case management. The third component on the navigation center site that we're incorporating again is, has to do with the modular for us at this specific site. And that is ensure, is to ensure that Monday through Friday, we actually have a services component that's even more advanced. And that includes um case management appointments, um inviting additional partners who have services beyond our expertise, such as those with medical health uh services, those with behavioral health services, peer-to-peer services, um that can also utilize that space to engage with folks coming through either the day center or the shelter. Again, with the idea that we have a highly resourced environment with people who are ready to respond, and an individual who is unhoused could access any of those touchpoints at any given time. They don't need to travel across our county or to different cities to find those services. I think I covered most of it.
Um, as a countywide, as a countywide service provider, we have relationships um through the Behavioral Health Resource Network with other countywide service providers, which will then have a landing base at that shelter facility, um so which currently has not been the case. Um, so they'll be able to come in and provide some of those services that previously may have only been available in McMinnville because we'll now have a site location for their staff. Um, and we aren't just looking at partnering just with Yamhill County, but there's a couple of other service providers um like Oregon uh Human Development Corporation and a few others that um can, you know, rotate in once a month or twice a month to also be able to meet with people um to provide outside resources that are not currently available in Yamhill County or in Newark.
I was gonna add also that the nav, the modular building is key to the success of the navigation center because it provides two private uh meeting rooms. So as you can imagine, if you were meeting with a mental health professional or a medical professional, you would want privacy. And currently in the existing house, there is no private rooms or spaces that that um the services could be provided. So that's uh why the modular building is being proposed as part of this.
That's great. I appreciate your uh response. I have one more question, and I think you partially answered this. But I'm wondering what the success rate has been in terms of finding permanent housing for the different clients coming through your doors.
Uh, permanent, separate from stable and or permanent. Because we've kind of, we've, we've um collected those together. So as long as it's a positive housing exit that promotes stability for them, um, or it's a permanent placement, because oftentimes we will find a a stable housing scenario that is positive, but we know that they may be working towards a next step in housing. So we've combined that and that is the seventy-two to seventy-five percent listed.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I, I can also respond a little bit to that. One of the success rates of turnkey as well as to provide case managers, the opportunity to determine if somebody can be in a private market apartment or if they're going to need some other kind of placement. Uh, because some individuals will require um assisted living, adult foster, permanent supportive, or some of these others uh services that are provided in the county that we have partnerships with. And that additional time that we have with that individual and these additional resources, the more the case managers can get to know, is this person going to be successful in a private standalone apartment? Or are they going to need some of these other uh permanent supportive housing um placements or other kind of support for long-term um housing? Those kinds of things can help then ensure that someone moves into a placement so that they're not back evicted back on the streets again. Um, that's one of the things we're really trying to make sure is that when people get housed in whatever that housing looks like, that that's, they stay housed, that they don't return to the streets.
I have a question, please. Um, you're, I, I familiar with the house that this is, and I, and I think that what you're doing is wonderful, and I can see where a modular building would take, um, you know, and provide privacy and for support for the support staff as well. Where, how many bedrooms or rooms and how, I don't see any plan that shows how all these beds, where do you, all these people going to sleep, twenty-four adults in that space?
So within the facility, we haven't had to create any additional bedrooms. What we've been able to do is uh some of them, we've made modifications for ADA access. Um, but through the construction process and clearing them out, we'll be replacing them with bunk beds uh in a couple of the rooms. So we'll have ADA or family room available. We may have a female bunk available. We may have a male bunk available. And um I don't have the exact number of bedrooms off the top of my head, even though I walked the shelter three hours ago.
I, I believe there's five or six separate bedrooms within the house. One is a large um on the first story that several bunk beds can be placed within that. So it could be a male bunk or female bunk designation. There is an ADA room um that has been created on the first floor, um which previously was not um available within the shelter. And then upstairs, there are uh several rooms that are more family um bedroom kind of configurations. And I believe there's four or five that are upstairs.
Do you?
That are set up, and those will also be bunk bed arrangements.
Do you have families that stay with children?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Yes.
So I am, I'm assuming that like the living room and the dining room and the original home is now beds.
No, those, those have been preserved. So
Oh, they have.
They've all been preserved for open spaces for people to um have a meal, to have a a meeting if necessary, that's not private. So the living room, um, the room off of the kitchen, none of that has been converted into bedroom space.
The, the downstairs will be between eight to ten um beds, and then the upstairs will be the remainder.
I see. Okay.
Uh, quick question. Uh, you mentioned uh having to turn people away for uh substance abuse issues and violation of rules. I'm assuming violence would be a uh possible contribu- contributing factor towards those rules. Um, how often does that happen?
Um, actually more infrequently than you think. So uh when it, I'm so sorry. I don't, I don't have a percentage or a number to share this evening. That is something, though, that I can um do a poll and follow up on with our staff and give you a general idea. Uh, but it's generally a handful of times, even when meeting with neighbors around this property, they couldn't count on more than one hand, especially neighbors who have been there for years. They could not count how many times they had heard of a violent incident or calling um for emergency services.
Certainly for, in the case of violence, in the case of substance abuse, they wouldn't hear anything. So I would imagine that'd be the major cause of being, turning something turning someone away. And I'm just curious how often something like that happens, whether that's the case of you not seeing those people very much, or whether it's a case of, you know, you're a little lenient perhaps with rules.
So when it comes to drug use, uh we are not lenient uh at all. Uh, if someone is not a harm self or others and keeping the rules, uh, that is fine. But if somebody has become a harm to self or others, we will move on that. If somebody brings drugs on property, we have policies and action taken on that. That's something that we have done within our turnkey facility. Um, I think in the last two years of operating turnkey, that's happened two or three times. Um, and that's again, has, has been thirty to forty rooms of up to eighty-nine people at any given time.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wright?
Just to clarify, drug use is not allowed on the property. Yeah.
Okay. I, I never thought otherwise.
Make sure.
Okay, according to also House Bill two thousand and six, Chapter eighteen, amends ORS four four six two six five twenty twenty-one from a previous uh twenty nineteen uh definition, it is actually the state's the same thing. Uh, number three, transitional housing accommodations aren't subject to ORS Chapter ninety for all of us. So any of the capacity codes or anything, I take this as we're not, we cannot by law count. But um getting a hold of Station twenty um here, I also contacted the fire department and the fire marshal. And they said they were not involved in this process, and what it comes down to is building codes. And then two documents for this issue. One relating to emergency preparedness or your, the emergency shelters says the emergency shelter refers to walk in until at or near capacity, and the Community Wellness Collective Harvest House stays through a twenty-two person capacity. Can you tell me what the building code capacity is for your building?
Sixteen.
Sixteen?
Yes.
Thank you. And this question is for the city. Mister Downing, Clay. Um, with their submittal for a uh their plans, uh will their building capacity go from a sixteen occupation, occupancy limit by building code up to twenty-four?
I'm gonna refer that to Mister Ruck's consideration. He was the case planner, not me on this one. Um. Excuse me, I guess I got too close. And so there will be, there there are remodel activities that do not require permits, and then there are remodel activities that do require permits. And uh YCAP uh has and will be talking with our building official, and the building official will be the one as they go through that review to determine the occupancy capacity of that facility.
Questions?
Can I have one more thing? I, we, we did have our project reviewed by the fire marshal. We were required to submit a stamped plan from the fire marshal with our application.
And that's something I would add. So in our land use process now with TVFNR is that there is a service provider permit requirement. And so in your packet submitted by the applicant, there's a set of plans that are been approved by the fire marshal. So they were involved in the uh, in the land use process. TVFNR is not directly involved in the building permit process. That is under the authority of the building official. If the building official needs to outreach to the fire marshal to have some coordination, he will do that, and he does that on a variety of projects.
Yes, I saw there was no conflict, fire marshal.
Okay, if there's no further questions, um, oh, you did? Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, first off, uh, I know you're in a difficult position. Um, anybody that's paid any attention to houselessness knows there are plenty of people who fall into that category, but not plenty of solutions. So I do appreciate that. And I also appreciate you answering all the questions I submitted yesterday. Uh, but I have a couple, I, I'd like to clarify a couple of things. You said you met with the neighbors. What was the response? Were they generally supportive of this expansion?
Uh, we had mixed responses. So um I think that we had a barely engaging conversation. Our original time we had planned was an hour and a half, and we spent three hours and forty-five minutes together. Um, and there were supports for um seeking creative and innovative solutions. Um, there were also concerns about impact to community and impacts to children and uh questions about um what pathways are available to these individuals towards work um solutions or towards behavior or health. Uh, I think at the end of that meeting, the majority of those around the table um felt positive around the discussion, even when several of us landed in a, okay, we still see things differently, but we had a discussion and um so YCAP does feel that it has a significant amount of support, but we understand that these are complex services and uh difficult from multiple perspectives.
Thanks. One of the reasons I asked.
I'd like to add to that as well. So um, on the initial, um, when we went around and visited with the initial sort of what, within one block around of the neighborhood, um, I'd say the vast um majority of the people who actually lived closest to the building were positive. Um, we had two or three that were, were not as positive. Um, and specifically had mentioned to us several issues that they had been experiencing recently with the, with the structure. Um, we have heard those and we have worked to find solutions for some Um we have heard those and we have worked to find solutions for some of those concerns. So in the notes that you have, um we have worked to address some of the issues of people lining up for the night. At night for the shelter, um we're going to find alternative methods to sign people up for the night shelter. Um so that there is not a line at the structure at night. So there are several things that have been brought up during these conversations. Uh there's been several phone conversations, email conversations, so it hasn't all been like one meeting, it's been sort of a. An ongoing conversation over the last several months. Um with different parties who've expressed different concerns, and we've been working to address those within our plans. About how we're gonna move forward with the facility.
Thank you, I I couldn't help but notice in our supporting materials, uh with the exception of some, I would say more. Why, whether you call it industry or uh what have you, I didn't see any individual neighbor. Who came uh to put forth an email or a letter saying, this is great, we think it's great, can we do it? But I saw plenty that said, not so great. A couple more questions. Uh one of them questions I asked yesterday in my email was how many times people were uh barred or what, whatever. Term you use from staying at the shelter based on. An issue during the day when they were not in the shelter, so I know that if they're in the shelter and you have rules, you know, they can get the boot and whatever. But what happens like when one of these individuals say trespasses in a neighbor's property? And nine one one is called. And you know, they're escorted off the property, whatever, uh does that bar them from staying? That night, or or it, so basically, how do we address issues that occur during the day when they currently cannot stay there?
Uh that's a good question, I do know that uh YCAP only has purview for what happens on our property to enact that policy with someone. But we are aware of our neighbors and we would step in to have conversations and enforce our good neighbor policy, which is described also in the response. Um that we have expectations for how those who seek our services behave in the community. Um and we would also work individually, whether that was the neighbor, uh a shelter guest, uh if law enforcement was involved. Anything like that, so we would engage, um it would depend on each scenario uh to be reviewed on a case by case basis. And um when those who seek our services come in, even if it's a daytime service, a shelter service. They do actually sign acknowledgement to the policies that we have listed, including that good neighbor policy that has specific activities that we are supportive of.
Thank you, I was just curious if there were were any instances of people leaving the shelter. Exhibiting some type of behavior that can include a nine one one response. And therefore the shelf, so you mentioned that you, that's not your purview, uh because they're not there. Uh one of the other things I would point out is House Bill two zero zero six, section three, sub paragraph one F. States that the the facility will not pose any unreasonable risk to public health or safety. How would you define uh unreasonable or the word any?
Um I think unreasonable risk or risk comes without having structure. Uh without having operating policies and procedure, both for the property and for program. It also uh any or unreasonable risk would fall under having staff that are not prepared to be in that space. And undergo appropriate training, um and have appropriate supports up to management and also outside resources. From YCAP to seek uh when providing those services. And I feel that within our model, we have very clear lines to have all of that in place. Um to create the least amount of risk possible through being proactive in setting our operations up in that way.
Uh what prevents additional locations? Uh I think you've mentioned there was one in McMinnville and one here, and obviously there are a lot more. Locations in Yamhill County, uh what's being done to sort of, lack of a better word, spread the wealth?
Specifically to opening a shelter or spread the wealth in what aspect?
Opening shelters.
Um so the three locations that are currently our focus are the ones that YCAP already owns. Um and in making the decision to invest navigation center funding. Um to those locations was actually dictated by the House Bill and who could qualify for being the recipient of those funds. So uh future funding may have different qualifications for who a tenured shelter provider can be and the oversight required. Um so at this time, I, there are no further locations identified, and we'll be onboarding Newburgh and we'll be onboarding McMinnville.
How often are you over capacity? For example, if you have, uh I think we use the term beds and individuals uh interchangeably. If your current capacity is sixteen and you have fifteen, and then a family of four shows up, do you turn them away?
So under YCAP oversight, we would not be able to accept a family of four, but what we would do is utilize. Uh one of our other programs if at all possible. Um and one of those that I've already mentioned is that we maintain uh relationships with local hotels across the county. And oftentimes, if a scenario like that comes up, we will place that family, that individual, or maybe it's somebody who's more medically vulnerable. That can't be in that situation, we will attempt to place them in a motel room. That's not an option, we'll work with uh other shelter sites that either we operate or a partner might operate.
So you're saying you've never had more than sixteen people?
Under YCAP oversight, we have not exceeded sixteen people.
When, when we.
When YCAP has operated the facility, we have not exceeded sixteen people.
And that's for the last two years or?
We operated from nineteen ninety to twenty and twenty-one. And for the last two years, we had a sub recipient agreement and lease on the facility to a community partner.
Okay, do you have any mechanism to prevent people who are not houseless from staying there? For example, uh I own a local business and uh I found out recently that we had a employee who's no longer there. Uh he, whenever he got into an argument with his girlfriend, he would simply say, well, I just go to the shelter and stay there. So this is not a houseless person, and he's taking resources away from people who are, is there some type of mechanism? Because with no barrier, you really don't know a whole lot about individuals.
So YCAP does an intake process, and it does have a standard set of questions that is thorough. And again, I cannot know, and someone may or may not be fully truthful with us. But we absolutely do ask their housing scenario uh that night, the previous night in general, amongst many other questions to do our best to. Screen and place individuals in an emergency shelter.
And those records are maintained in the system, so if someone is pulled up and we see that this has been ongoing or, you know, then. Things get flagged, you know, it provides an opportunity for case managers to act, to ask questions. Because because we are diligent in terms of putting that information in, that information is not just put in for individuals for shelter at night. But also for people who access day shelter, day center services, so everybody will be entered into the homeless. Management information system, so that we can track accurately who's utilizing the services.
Emergency shelter operates in some similar fashions, uh some key differences, some similar fashion to how our food banking. Uh arrangements work where we will, you know, ask somebody if they are in need of food, and at the end of the day. Um we can only do so much to know if they truly are in need of food and do our best to offer an emergency or life giving uh resource.
Uh the reason I asked about overcapacity is because I had a friend who was a volunteer there uh for quite some time. And the response uh I heard at the time, uh which I, this wasn't on the issue, I wasn't even on the committee then. Was that they would never turn away a family, that there are in fact existing cots that can be brought out. So it's, it would seem to be uh maybe a disconnect somewhere. That to say that we're never over sixteen.
Is this a YCAP volunteer under when YCAP was operating the shelter?
Yes.
So previous to twenty twenty-one, because YCAP did not involve uh volunteers in the shelter previous. We only had a resident manager.
And we had a set number of individuals who were in the building on a regular basis.
So that may have occurred under a different operation in the last two years, but not under YCAP operation.
That helps clarify, thank you. Again, uh the the questions are more because of my ignorance of the operation and opposition or support. I applaud what you do, I just, as you know way better than I, there's no easy solutions to these. Anyway, I I don't have any tales.
Could I ask one question? Totally inappropriate and not even valid to even ask. Why would you put a facility like this? In an existing residential area with children and family? Why wouldn't something like this be in more of a commercial setting or a more industrial? Where they have easy access to stores, easy access to supplies. But it's not in a family neighborhood.
Um there's a couple of layers to that, uh one is that we're actually enhancing supports at an existing successful shelter site. Uh so with more oversight, we don't expect to create significant impact in the neighborhood that it has been operating. Uh and with the experience we have had of trying this style of an approach at turnkey. And not having grave impacts to the surrounding area, we believe that we can be successful in maintaining that. Second, uh YCAP doesn't have access to any other property and does not have access to the funding for that property, and there are barriers. Which I am not well versed in, but do know exist to citing um this in other areas, at least in. Some cities, we know that industrial property is not available for a project like this.
I would also like to note that during the presentation that Doug made, that when this property came to YCAP. In nineteen ninety, it was actually an M two.
Catch that.
Of that location, so I would suggest that the residential built up around the shelter. Rather than the shelter being placed within the residential.
Okay, I did, I did hear that, thank you.
Actually, I have one more question, uh you mentioned that you had uh meetings with neighbors, and one of uh individuals you said you met with was the mayor. Was he supportive or not?
Yes, we walked away, we had two specific meetings with the mayor, and in both uh we had full support.
And this is somewhat unrelated, but also related, and I'm not, I'm asking uh just your opinion. Because it's something else that we'll be discussing this eve- this evening, and that's short term rentals. Uh which they come with their own. Uh people have concerns about those, uh do you feel that the increase in the short term rentals? Uh negatively affects this situation, in other words, less housing available for rent or to purchase. Uh we're we're removing housing from the community, which uh maybe I'm connecting dots that shouldn't, but. It, I would think that the more houses that are taken off the market, so to speak. Uh it drives up the prices of the houses, so.
Yeah, um I'd be happy to answer that, I think, I think increases in housing costs in Newburgh, everybody is fully aware. Um somewhat painfully aware of how expensive it is to live in Newburgh right now. Um for example, the house that is directly across the street from our shelter. Um recently sold for three times what it was purchased ten years ago. And that's a, and I don't think anybody who's working class in Newburgh's salary has gone up three hundred percent in the last ten years. So it is an ongoing crisis in terms of the market, individuals being priced out of the market, there's also been several, if anybody follows the Newburgh. Dundee Community Forum discussions, you will see constantly people on there saying. I make X amount of money and I can't find housing, there was a recent one literally stating that her and her husband makes seven thousand dollars a month. And they still cannot find housing in Newburgh, um due to a a barrier of a a modest um issue with a credit score. So there's a a variety of issues I think that are impacting, which is again causing this influx of individuals into homelessness. Within your community, um there's often the questions of, do these people live here? And my question is, how could they not, given what you have seen in terms of rental increases, in terms of home prices? And things of that nature, especially when you're dealing with people who are living on fixed incomes, if their house gets sold out from under them. Because it triples in value and the person who owns the house that's renting them out decides to take the cash. And go, especially at the moratoriums of rentals in COVID, may have left them thinking, well, do I really wanna keep renting to people? They lose their rental that maybe they were paying a thousand dollars on for a long period of time. And now all of a sudden, they can't find a place that's eighteen hundred with an average cost of um five thousand dollars for a deposit. I don't know how many working class people have five thousand dollars sitting in the bank to do a deposit on a new apartment. When maybe their deposit at their old place was five hundred dollars or a thousand. So you you're running into these realities of a larger economic issue um within your community. And so we know that that's where, we're we're trying to address this with a capacity of up to twenty-four. We know twenty-four is not gonna be sufficient, which is why we've sought funding for additional motel rooms. So that we again do not go over that twenty-four, as we have stated. But that we can utilize those motel rooms for any overage that we see in the community. Because we do think this is gonna take a while to get addressed, and it needs to be addressed at a more holistic way within the city. Um otherwise, we're just gonna see more and more people who just cannot afford to live in Newburgh.
So to summarize, can I assume that you would be not supportive of sure? Would be supportive of additional regulations or restrictions on the number of short term rentals?
I I think short term rentals are a small portion of a much larger issue. In terms of housing availability, there are a lot of things causing pressure on housing availability in Newburgh.
Yeah, I specifically.
So I think that, I think it is a piece of the puzzle, but the puzzle is vast.
I would agree, I I I specifically addressed it, short term rentals, because it's on the agenda. Thank you.
Commissioner Wright, um you stated that uh you will need a modular house for some of the staff. Previously, does the staff stay overnight in the house? And will they be doing so if you are allowed to have the modular building?
Yeah, uh the previous model under YCAP operation was just having a resident manager uh that stayed overnight in the house. Uh but did not have to stay up, did not have to be alert or do any checks. Um and was free to come and go to their place of work and whatever needed throughout the day, as long as they were there for uh everyone checking in for the evening. Uh this model that we are moving forward with will at any given time have two to five staff present. Uh a minimum of two trained staff uh in the shelter in the evenings, and they will not be sleeping overnight or in an apartment. But alert and doing safety checks and rounds, aware of is what is happening both inside and outside of the shelter. Uh during the daytime, that could increase up to as much as five staff. Uh who are overseeing the services center portion in the modular and partners on site. As well as what type of activities will be happening uh on the main floor of the shelter when someone is available to access it, potentially to use a restroom. To access some basic food resources, to connect with laundry use items such as that.
And my last and final question has to do with your parking. And now you've requested four par- four parking spaces, but I noticed that one of them is not mentioned to be ADA dedicated space. And there might be enough room to actually add a fifth parking space that will be ADA compliant. Um Doug. Is the driveway forty feet across on the top or forty feet deep?
Or. Across? Forty feet in width.
Okay, can you bring up the parking map, please?
And Commissioner, that condition is in alignment with what was required in nineteen ninety.
Yes, but federal government requires that all businesses and places have an ADA space. And I know you have clients that normally don't have cars and things like that, but this could serve as dual capacity, as a loading area. Dedicated loading space and an ADA compliant space for evening. And loading can be utilized during the day. Is potentially um on the east side of the yard facing um College Street. There might be enough space between the sidewalk and the street or entry driveway to put in a. There might be enough space between the sidewalk and the street or entry driveway to put in additional um, vehicle there. If there are eight feet, an average of eight feet of stall, you can fit five uh, cars in forty feet. I don't know. What is our regulation for a width for parking space?
Nine by eighteen.
Okay, I messed up by one foot. All right. Um, it is a thought for the city and for Y cap to have a dedicated and loading spot uh, determined by time, time issues. Thank you.
Okay, it looks like there's no further questions um, from commissioners at this time. So I thank you. You will be invited up later for rebuttal. And so we'll move on to public comments. And I'll read the name and come forward. Please state your name again, because there's a decent chance I'll get it wrong. But um, let's start with, um, is it Cody Olson?
You want to hit the silver button there, Cody?
Can you hear me all right? Okay. Um, okay, so you, a couple of you guys mentioned some things. Um, one thing I would, I would point out, I, I went to a few of their, um, or I went to one of the get togethers for the neighborhood. Um, and uh, you were asking about how people were responding to that. And I would point out that, um, actually, my wife and I own two properties in the area. And uh, one property is like six houses down. And the other one's like right over by Jake with Park. And so it's also very close. But uh, that property didn't get notified at all about what was going on. So I think a concern is that being invited to uh, speak or like hear about this, speak about this. Uh, it was, it's impacting a greater area than um, than the people that are getting invited to, to speak at this. Um, I mean, like, for example, like Jake with Park is uh, seeing like, you know, a lot more homeless people in the area. And that's, you know, affecting the people that live there and take their kids to that park, but they're not invited to go to these things. Um, I also really liked, uh, your, what you said about um, the possibility of this being somewhere else other than a neighborhood. That's kind of a big theme about what I'm going to talk about. And then, and sir, for, for you, you mentioned, um, uh, that whether or not them people are on drugs and how that screening process works. And, and I learned from the um, the meeting I went to last week with the um, the people that were up here just speaking, who were very uh, nice and informative. And I really appreciate uh, the time that they, they took uh, the last week with that. But um, there didn't seem to be any kind of um, way to determine if somebody is on drugs, has drugs on them or, or anything like that. It's like, the rule is that they can't do drugs there. But I, they're not being searched, they're not being tested. Um, you know, there's not really anything to stop them from having drugs right there in their pocket that they could do onsite. Or that they did right before and are going to do right after, you know, coming and going from there. So, so I bring those, those things up just after hearing what you guys talk. And then I'll try to get into what I um, sort of put together here. So I've been living in Newburgh since two thousand eleven. I moved here because it looked like a good place to raise kids. And it was a nice neighborhood. Harvest House has been here that entire time that I've lived here. And I hadn't really, like you, like you mentioned earlier, sir, that hadn't really noticed them for the longest time. And um, I believe something you were, you were getting at, uh, or that wasn't quite, I'm not sure this, if this was communicated right. But I learned this from the meeting I went to last week that um, so, so it was owned by Y cap. And I'm sure when they come up for the rebuttal, if I say something wrong, they can correct me on this, but owned by Y, Y cap for that, this whole time. And then like, whether it was like two years ago or something like that, it started being managed by another place. And then that place has now, they don't, they're not managing it anymore. Now Y cap's going to take back over. So, so some of the stuff you were talking about was probably during that period of time. Um, that, that it was uh, owned or like managed by another place, even though it was still owned by Y cap. Well, that's, that's the time that I have to say in living i- in this area, I have noticed huge differences within that was, there's just like the last two years or something like that. You know, never noticed that. I'd never even knew it was a shelter before that. And I've been living here since, since two thousand eleven. And in this, in that period of time, it became very apparent. They had the open sign, the little neon open sign that showed up in the window. And then there was just uh, just a lot of trouble with the homeless population, spreading all around. Starting to look like some of the things that we kind of start to see in Portland that I think everybody's look, prepared ages about. So um, so I'm, so let's see here. Um, within the past two years, I noticed a big change. I could definitely tell it was a shelter now. Homeless people are all through the neighborhoods more than they ever have been. And they all seem to gravitate around the shelter. I started having experiences myself and hearing stories from neighbors about things like open drug use, theft, threats, trespassing with people not leaving. Um, and I could actually go on and on. I'd definitely use up over uh, five minutes from what I've experienced myself and heard from ne- from neighbors in the area about uh, how this is impacted. And um, and I'll just kind of break away from what I'm writing here, just to say like, um, I'm not trying to sound like, like I'm not compassionate about the homeless problem and, and trying to help people like that. I think what, these people's hearts are in the right place. But uh, I think the thing I'm the most concerned about is the kids growing up in this neighborhood. Um, that's, you know, it's like uh, the, the classic thing, like if a doctor's looking at um, trying to cure somebody with ailment, they got that rule, the first do no harm. So I think if you look at this community like that, I think the rule should be first do no harm. So if you're making, if you're bringing more crime and drug use into the area, then the people, the kids growing up there are just around that more. And statistically have a higher chance of becoming involved in that kind of stuff themselves. And that's, that's a major concern of mine. So um, last, right here, I say, uh, last week. Yeah, yeah, okay. Uh, last week, I went to a meeting where I learned that the right, right around the same time I started noticing um, all the changes. Let's see. Um, yeah, just, this is a spark part where I mentioned that this is when I noticed that change happening, that change in policy. And um, the overall result seemed to be more drugs, more crime, less safety. Uh, previously the poli- now, previously the policy was to mostly focus um, on uh, now battered women is what I've heard. Okay, so I don't have all the statistics like to be like. But this is what I've heard, this place was used at primarily before. And I think they had used it for several different things, but I, you know. So they can correct me on that, but, but the difference being uh, in the, in the previous.
Already, I'm, Cody, yeah, in fairness, we are going to have to wrap. Um, so we hold at the five minutes thing.
Okay, yeah, I'll try to make it quick, but I mean, uh.
Cause, cause we have other, others to, that want to speak and everything, okay?
Okay, uh, yeah, let's see. Can I just, okay, let me, so let me just really quick say what I, what, the, the difference that, that's happening here is that before, when they, when they, when they owned it in that previous company, didn't own it in the mi- in the middle time there. Um, they had a process, that was what I learned from their meeting last time, is that where they would interview the people and have them apply like ahead of time. And then they would be brought in. Um, and then during the time when I noticed things starting getting bad, they had a policy of anyone could just show up that day and they would have an intake process. But it would be pretty short and like, you could just show up that day and be, and be let in. And so I think that's um, one of the major things that's changed. And so when we're talking about, it could be getting better. I don't see it getting better because of those, that thing, that is still in place. Like better would be like it was before, where it was a shelter helping people before and we didn't notice it in the neighborhood. And I think that the major change there was the fact that then they had them screened ahead of time versus they just show up. And they, and they can be, they can be let in. And then um, what they're adding to it is a daytime uh, services. And they're also adding more beds. So I see the problem getting, that I've described here getting worse with the, the more beds, the daytime policy and, and then continuing uh, the, the um, the first come, first served people just show up. So, so uh, thank you for your time, you guys. And I just uh, overall, go back to kids growing up in this neighborhood. And can we have it somewhere industrial? It's not going to be bringing more um, crime and drugs into our area. Oh, thank you.
Before you go, before you go, the commissioners may have questions.
Okay.
No, okay, thank you.
Thanks for your time, man.
So, so for everybody that comes up to speak, just please wait before you uh, e- exit stage left. Because commissioners may have questions for whatever you uh, may testify about.
Thank you. And um, is it Vicky? Is it, I'm sorry, um, by bargain? Okay, come on up.
Good evening. Um, my name is Vicky Y Bargain and I'm the Executive Director of the Housing Authority of Yamhill County. Um, as a local leader who also addresses complex issues around housing in our community, I'm here today to present my support for Y cap's efforts related to the Newburgh Shelter and Navigation Center Services. For the past two years, HOIC has been privileged to partner with Y cap to onboard their turn- turnkey program. This program's had up to forty rooms available for low barrier, non-congregate shelters at any given time. And this means that there's up to eighty individuals in towns there. We supplied onsite property management to support while Y cap provided the shelter participants with intensive case management and high level resources. Y cap's been a steady partner and a reliable provider. Due to this, Y cap has fully transitioned into taking on more and more of the property oversight. And HOIC has been able to step back our property management services. We're excited to see them develop this property to further serve the community in years to come. Every time I drive by the turnkey property or visit, I'm looking to see if there's changes or issues um, related to the types of service provided onsite. Every time I see a property that's not in chaos, and in fact, it has a better upkeep than when it was a motel. It has onsite trained support staff and provides pathways out of homelessness in ways we haven't been available previously in Yamhill County. The impact to the area has been minimal. And both HOIC and Y cap have, have coordinated with neighbors, businesses, city staff and emergency services to maintain the site in a good standing. Y cap has done groundbreaking work to offer this type of low barrier and a high resource shelter approach and has been successful. It's important to note that their success is also because they've collaborated with partners to ensure they aren't duplicating services or efforts. Y cap, along with HOIC, work in tandem and help build an effective continuum of services. HOIC develops, owns and properties, and we also provide our section eight housing vouchers. Y cap provides the homeless services in assist with the transition to long-term housing, including properties that are owned by the housing authority. We know that through the navigation centers and turnkey, Y cap's going to set future residents up for positive transitions and long-term housing stability. We know this also will translate to other housing options throughout, through emergency vouchers, alternative home placements, private market rentals and permanent supportive housing programs. While a navigation center may seem standalone here in Newburgh, it's supported by a robust continuum of intentional access points to help Yamhill County residents exit homelessness and find stable housing. This powerful work is supported by the vast network of countywide service providers. Based on the success that we've witnessed, HOIC highly recommends Y cap continue its dedicated work around advancing shelter resources in Yamhill County. We look forward to having this resource available as we are serving some of the most vulnerable residents in our community. Thank you for your time.
I just wanted to thank both you and Cody for speaking so cordially on either matter of this subject. It takes a lot to come here and spend your time. So thank you both for connecting yourself this way. It's very helpful comments on both sides. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. So uh, let's go with um, Gary Bueller. Would you like to come in up?
Hello, and I, uh, first I want to s- I think all, all of you for a lot of hard work. Just hearing the codes and everything kind of wears me out. And um, and also the uh, Y cap, it sounds like they're doing some great work. And I'm, I'm in favor of helping the homeless. And so, so it's not like I'm, it's not a, you know, it's, it's not like there's any I have an axe to grind, but I do live in the neighborhood. I live three blocks from the shelter. And I, I heard no, I didn't hear a thing about this till I saw the sign. What, what are they, oh, what are they doing there? I didn't know. And my, I talked to some other neighbors even closer who didn't hear anything. So I'm not sure about the, the neighborhood involvement. Uh, I think just involving people in, within a once. The ni- the shelter affects more than people that, one block away. I guess that's what I'm saying. And uh, I have a statement here that I wrote. Um, a few, a few words about expansion of the homeless shelter on College Street. And having a homeless shelter there that serves marginal members of the community is a good thing. And uh, and as it stood, as the, as, as the, the young man spoke previously for a long time with, with no impact, you know, or no negligible, no negative impact. It, so it was, oh, and I, I had a homeless friend that I would, okay, this is a good place to, to drop somebody off because he needed help. And so I, I applauded that. Uh, but um, I'm, I'm concerned about the increase by fifty percent of the population and the impact that will have on the community. Uh, there's a balance between the established community and the more transit population. And currently it is strained. Like I said, I live close and my neighbors get things stolen from their, their yards frequently. And they feel uh, kind of uncomfortable with that. And uh, I think the increasing, the, the ratio of those with poorer social integration skills with the already established community creates more tension. And uh, and I agree with the comment that I've heard several people mention the, the uh, the thought, which I think is a good thought, that maybe sharing the wealth, you know, are there, has anybody looked at at, at other shelters and other places instead of concentrating in one established neighborhood? This established neighborhood with families in two blocks from George Fox. And all, you know, a lot of things going on here. And uh, I'm, I'm concerned about the uh, community balance being strained. Let's see. And my alternative is an additional space, homeless space in a different neighborhood. I think, and I think Y cap would probably agree with that too, but there, there seems to be no money, no interest. Although there seems to be a lot of money out there, but to, to look for another space. So um, there'd be, right now, I'm, I'm concerned about the thefts that we've seen that, that, and I'm concerned about more traffic, crowded parking spaces, uh, the use of neighborhoods for what they're unnecessarily intended to use. And so I think that's basically what I wanted to say. I'm not going to go on too long. And I'm, I'm a little curious what happened to Y cap during COVID. Why did, why were they absent out of this space for two years? And why did it's this space? Cause, cause the, the space was, I, I mean, that was a desperate time certainly, but I'm just curious. So. And uh, that's all I have to say. Are there any questions you asked me to entertain questions of?
Sorry. I appreciate your viewpoint. Um, I, my concern is also that the park is so close by. And uh, that was mentioned. That's a really good place to hang out while you're waiting for your bed that night. Yeah.
Well, thank you. You, you, sorry, uh, you made a comment about neighbors who were of course unhappy because things were stolen from their property. How are we sure that the theft was related to the residence?
Well, I have a neighbor who has a video camera and he was saying that he has documentation. Because we, you know, I'm, I'm, I told him about this and he was surprised, you know, he just lives two blocks away. Well, this first I've heard of it. It goes, well, and my things in front of my place are getting stolen frequently. I have cameras out. I have documentation. So uh, that's, that's, it's not just anecdotal, it's, it's evidential.
Thanks. I was just asking for clarification.
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
So I know others. So thank you.
Thank you.
And moving on, we'll go to Karina Rice. Would you like to come up?
You just turned it off. You can turn the back on. Thank you so much.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission and Newburgh Community Neighbors. My name is Karina Sanchez Rice. I've been a resident of Newburgh since nineteen ninety and have lived in this very neighborhood since then. I would like to please say a few words expressing support for the. I would like to please say a few words expressing support for the expansion and proposed plans for the YCAP shelter. I believe the proposed work will improve the street, provide better ADA accessibility, bringing better definition to the intersection, improving the livability in this community. It will ensure the property and residents located at six one five North College Street will be better maintained and not become overgrown and neglected. The proposed project will bring structure to the city's houseless population, eventually reducing the disenfranchised persons seeking temporary shelter. The goal, as I see it, is to turn transitional housing into permanent living situations, provide healthcare resources, and employment resources for persons in need. Thank you for your time and attention. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have with me.
I have one question. Where is your current, right? You said you live in Newburgh?
Yes, on Vermillion Street.
On Vermillion Street.
And I have lived on Vermillion Street since nineteen ninety-two. Previously, I lived on North Street, the next street over, since nineteen ninety.
About the time it started. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming forward with your testimony. It's appreciated.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. And then moving on, we'll go with Alexander Martin. If you'd like to come up.
First of all, thank you so much for allowing us the opportunity to speak about this. I sympathize with the issue and commend YCAP for working with the issue. The problem, as I see it, isn't the substance of what they're trying to do, but the execution of how they're going about it. They talk about the last couple of years that where things have changed, and clearly that model wasn't working, which is why the necessity for them to take back over. In some cases, I, some way, I see that as a bit of a dereliction of their duty in, in having that space to pass it off to somebody else. And what stops them from doing that again? That's a thought of mine. I live three blocks from the house. I have a five-year-old son, and we have seen in the last two years specifically, a ton of issues come up. I would say overall, within a four-block radius of that facility, there's over fifty children, and I think that's estimating it on the low number. We've had instances where we've had groups of men standing on the corner, smoking whatever with twelve to fifteen parents waiting for the school bus in the morning. And of the eight houses on my block, four on, on each side on Franklin Street, there's been countless break-ins. Even just this week, neighbor had had cans stolen from their yard. Someone went onto their property, took a number of cans out of their yard and, and took off with them. We had cars broken into, and at this point now of those eight houses, six of those homes have cameras, have motion detectors, all from feeling the necessity to protect our homes and protect our properties. And that has all come about within the last two years, specifically within the last year that those cameras have gone up. The phrase "in our community" has been passed around a lot in terms of this. And I would challenge that the people who are staying there are members of our community. I wonder if there's a way to know whether they are members of the community, whether they're residents of Newburgh, Yamhill County, if they're parts of that within the protocols of check-in. There's been talk about drug usage and how to check for that as well. They've also talked about the seventy-two percent success rate. I, you know, one of the things I learned in statistics classes, you can make statistics say anything you want. And so I have questions about the age groups of those success rates and, you know, different ways that those numbers come about. But even within that, what happens to the twenty-eight percent that aren't success rates? And the current results, I think, in one of the slides they showed early on was below twenty-five percent, which is scary to think that of those, there's twenty-five percent. I've also heard of, you know, sixteen being the capacity, and I've, I've heard stories from around town of as many as forty people being in there in a night and wondering what kind of oversight is on that. Finally, to finish up, when you have a place like this, it's placed in a neighborhood specifically, you have a responsibility to minimize the harm to the community, and it's unquestionable that the community that I live in, that I speak to, that I'm around, is being harmed by this being here. Thank you.
No questions? Okay, thank you. And moving on, we'll go with Patty McIntyre.
You want to turn that back on?
Sorry about that. My name is Patty McIntyre, and I am four blocks from the home. And I have a few things that I've just been jotting down. Mike, I do appreciate your good, pointed questions. And a few things were brought to mind, and even yours, Jason. When people are, I have a lot of questions. When people are escorted from the property, are they just told to leave, or does someone escort them? How are they taken more than four blocks away from it? Is my concern. I, I really appreciate the work that they're doing. I was at the last planning commission meeting and left when we couldn't get to that topic, this topic, and left with the gal that I sat next to, the gal that lives right next door to the house. We exited the building and came back in to talk to the YCAP folks, and they were super nice. We would sit down in the parking lot for like forty-five minutes. I learned a lot about the work that they do, and it's really good. It's fabulous. There's no way that you can guarantee the safety of our kids if that thing is there or if it's not there. I totally get that. But why increase the danger? Why? Just because you can run out in the street if a car's coming doesn't mean it's good for you. Just because you can touch a hot stove doesn't mean it's good for you. There's a reason they put the stove up high so little kids can't touch it, and we need to keep our kids safe in our neighborhood. There's no reason to open the oven door and shove them in it. It's kind of how it feels. I don't have kids. I always wanted kids. And I feel like my job is to, like, I love squirting the kids when they go by on their bicycles, and then I see the dad come out on the corner, and he just waves and makes sure that his kids are safe. That's what we do. And I love that. I just, you talk about a vulnerable population. Our children are vulnerable just as much as anybody, and I don't think that they should be punished because the people that have made poor choices in their lives. And that's unfortunate. And not always bad choices, for sure. Sometimes just bad things happen to good people, that's for sure. But I can think of a number of places where there is space available, where people that could be a danger could be, their Grange hole is empty twenty-four seven. Why not people that, put people that are more at risk to our community, put them someplace like that. There's a gas station at Fred Meyer that's probably always looking for somebody to pump gas. And there's nobody to do it. Put them in a place where they can find a job, where it's more accessible. There's more industry out there. There's nothing down in this area but the park where they bathe in the fountain. Completely inappropriate. They sit there and watch the kids play in their bathing suits. I don't think that's necessarily appropriate either. I, we, there's no way. Five years ago, when I moved into my house, I could look online and see if predators lived in my neighborhood or close to my home, and they didn't. And I was like, great. I moved into this house. I've been so happy. I've met new neighbors since this issue came up, and it, I've seen some of them change their minds after listening to the work that YCAP does, and I think that's absolutely fabulous. I still like the people. It's not like I'm angry with them or don't like them. The work is good. I just think they can find a better location. A couple of other things. So the gal that I was here with the last time, and we stayed late and spoke with the people from YCAP, she lived right next door. She has since put her home on the market because she could not enjoy her home. She couldn't even sit in, with her windows open on a cool summer evening because of the smoking and the talking and the people lining up outside her home. Yes, they've addressed that. But there's a nice big patio right outside the back part of her home, or whoever else is going to be subject to that. So how is that person guaranteed enjoyment of their home? I don't know how that's possible. I don't think I would like it. Um, how, when, I'm going backwards. So when people are trespassed off the property, are neighbors notified of that? Is there something that goes out to tell us what to look for? Or we just left there to fend for ourselves? Um, there, there just has to be a better spot for it, and that's kind of about all I've got to say. And thank you for your time. I appreciate the hard work that you guys do. I know there's a lot to this, and I appreciate your good judgment. Do you have any questions?
I have a very important question. Why do you squirt kids?
Thank you. It was hot outside. It was like the bike wash, like a car wash, but it was bike wash. They actually went down and got other friends and brought them back, too. It was fun. Did she ever do that in New York?
I knew why she did that.
It was fun. They liked it.
Commissioner Wright, one of the things I can offer some of the residents here this evening is the Chapter Eighteen Act of House Bill two thousand and six, in Section Four, or Section Three, Number Four, actually, Number Five, the approval of an emergency shelter under this section is not a land-use decision and subject to review only under ORS thirty-four point zero one zero to thirty-four point one hundred. We also cannot alter zoning and other issues when it comes to emergency housing based on some of our housing bills and land and executive orders that have come through.
So what does that mean? What are you addressing with that? Exactly. There's a lot of numbers.
It means by law, we cannot alter zoning and not accommodate emergency shelters.
Grange is not a good place for that. Is that what you're saying, or you're not?
No, it just says, the approval of an emergency shelter is not a land-use decision, and it is only subject to review under a certain law.
Okay.
So all of the Chapter Ninety land-use laws, Newburgh municipal codes, things like that, we're not allowed to access certain part of those in our decision-making form.
So Commissioner Wright, if I may to hopefully clarify that a little bit, what I believe what she's trying to say is that we cannot determine whether there's a shelter there or not. We can only determine whether they can do this expansion or not. So whether we make a decision in the affirmative or the positive or the negative, it will not affect the existence of the shelter, merely the expansion of it.
Well, I beg you not to make the problem bigger. Please, 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 please. Thank you.
Thank you. And next up, let's have Barbara Pearson.
Hi. I moved to Newburgh about three years ago, had a farm. I'm renting now about two blocks from the shelter. About a week ago, I planned on coming here and being the kind of person who said, not in my neighborhood, which goes against everything I believe in. I've always had a heart for the homeless and felt like they're, but for the grace of God, go I. But that's where, where it had come to. When I first moved here during the pandemic, I didn't know anyone. I had my unemployed border collie and myself, and any of the businesses that would let me bring my dog in because she missed the people coming and going at the farm we went, and I got to know them, and, and then the shelter reopened. I'm renting. I don't know if I mentioned that. It was like, just didn't know if I wanted to stay here, what I wanted to do. So I, I consoled myself with leaving the country by saying I'm going to be able to walk places, be part of a small community. And it was, other than the pandemic, it was okay. And I could run at night. My grown sons did not like me running at night. I finally asked a police officer, and you're fine. And then the shelter reopened, and little by little, everything from vomit in the camellia baskets. And when you have an unemployed border collie, you put a lot of miles on your feet, and you get bored, and you go different places, and damn. So the food, the underwear, the, it would sit in front of places for days, you know, and I, I would pick it up and I watched, to become my friends, these shopkeepers, their customers becoming frightened to come in, and their sales were down. And you feel for them, the lack of business, and it's, it's different. Then for my own house, there's a, there's a fence around my house, and there's some real tall trees that block the bright lights that are on college. I'm on the corner of college and Franklin. And some of the things that I saw happen were I started picking up human feces thrown in my yard. Suddenly, I had, I don't like those glue traps for rodents, but the rat ones are really big, and I started catching rats that hung over the sides. Those were bigger than any rats I had on the farm. And so things like backpacks left on my, my porch with belongings and drug paraphernalia. Them staying all night under the trees and talking really loud, but with a, asking the police some things, and that's a whole other topic, how their hands are tied with certain loitering laws and that. You know, and you don't want to be the one that calls it in because it's kind of obvious who called, you know, and canine dogs, I learned that, I assume canine dogs in Newburgh were looking for drugs, but they're actually looking for people, and they'll come through the neighborhood. I've seen them four times, once in the, once in the day, and then at night, and and I think it's important to tell some of these stories because, like many, all of, I just find neighbors and people in town have no idea. Everything from the gang wannabe stuff when the graffiti changed during the pandemic, because they noticed that, and I, one night, or one day, rather, I was working in the yard, and on the Franklin side of the road, I went to the bed, the, kind of the side towards the back on the college end. And I'm grabbing something. Someone had just walked in my house, this woman, and she was clearly high, and I didn't want to, by then I had learned what fentanyl does, and you know, the police told me what I needed to have and the bear spray and that, and I didn't want to get in the house with her, and so I called it in because just to have it on the record, and I said, no, don't waste, you know, I don't need you to come out, and they came out anyway and asked a few more description questions, and they said she was a wanted felon. And when she came out of my house into my backyard, walking around the other way, she's like, oh, you're the shelter. And like, it was clearly, she was trying to talk her way out. Really disconcerting, and, and I grew up in New Jersey, outside in New York City. So generally, I don't, I think the scary, the truly scary time was in the daytime, I was doing some restaurant flowers on ninety-nine, heading towards Portland, and it's eleven-thirty on a Friday morning, and I actually drove instead of walked, and I had a man coming, and he was, he appeared to be like a restaurant worker reporting, and he was kind of asking for help and holding his phone up because he was speaking. He was kind of asking for help and holding his phone up because he was speaking a foreign language and. I'm, you know, I'm taken aback and before I know it, he's really in my personal space and. I just decided to get in my car and, because my bear spray was in my car and he starts getting in my car. Um, it's the middle of the day. So, so. These things are happening. And I have, uh, we have a neighborhood, uh. Resident that is a pastor downtown. He helps the homeless and I had to talk with him and say, I have a hard heart. I'm looking over my shoulder all the time and anybody walking down the street. And he said, you have to do that. Um, I'll finish up.
Okay, Barbara.
So where I've come to now, as I come to you, I decided that no matter what, I needed to approach the meeting last week with. YCAP with an open mind because the polarity in our country now is a problem for all of us and. Um, I had an open mind and I listened and I learned that, that the, of the difference in management, the difference in policies and I listened and I have a. Nonprofit background and I checked them out. I picked up the phone and I called Oregon Community Foundation contacts I had. I called Life Works Northwest people and that and, um. I look at it probably because I'm old, very practically that we are going to have homeless people in our neighborhood now. Because where the bus stop is, where the grocery store is. So I would personally rather see it well managed. And hopefully they're transitioning up the ladder as their plan. Shows, um, than having them just be out there on the street. So thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
No, but it's, uh, your testimony is very relevant. I thank you for coming forward. You've brought some, uh, good issues in front of this committee. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next up, um, Elise Jarnell.
Hello, my name is Elise Jarnell Holloman and, um, I. Represent the service provider that operated out of the property for the last two and a half years at six one five North College Street. And I also just want to say that I'm in recovery and have ten years. So I, um, also, um, think it's important just to, um. Always normalize the faces of addiction that are within our community and are also, um, community leaders now and, and living a thriving life. So. Um, I actually want to start out by saying that I fully support this project. We have seen firsthand as the low, um, as the low barrier shelter provider during the pandemic, the impacts of. Homelessness and the lack of resources within our county and community. The Newburgh Emergency Shelter was contacted by YCAP in the fall of twenty twenty to repurpose their property on their behalf as a subcontract recipient. As a low barrier shelter. So the questions pertaining to two point five years ago, I would challenge are not because of the service provider, but because the change in shelter use. For two point five years, we operated in a great relationship with YCAP. It was not until the last couple of months that intense conversations around construction plans. And a feeling of exclusion created a rift in our relationship. And one that I'm not proud of. Quite frankly, on my part as well. I was not planning to give comment today at all, but actually trying to come in support of this project and also in support of the neighbors that we've developed relationships with. Um, in the last couple of years that we've heard from today that have expressed, um, pretty troubling concern. Um, but I also felt, um, after listening to the presentation, that it was important for the commission to hear from the service provider. Um, because I do believe that, um, some of the current concerns brought forward, um, addressed by YCAP shifted the blame. Um, that this will change, that the concerns brought forward will change with a new service provider. Um, I think they will continue. That doesn't mean I'm not in support. I think it's a complex conversation that we have to have as a community. That I, as a community leader, am fully invested in and I also have the trust and respect that YCAP will do the same. I do feel like it's disingenuous to say that these concerns that the neighbors have brought forward will be solved through YCAP taking oversight. YCAP was aware of our capacity throughout the entire time of our tenure at the facility through our monthly reporting that we submitted to the housing director. Direct questions of demographics and services couldn't be answered, um, by YCAP. During this presentation, which also gives me concern that the meetings that we were holding. We, we were obviously not fully getting through. I share this because I think demonstration of the neighbors in the room today also show that further community conversations and engagement is warranted. For us to build a truly collaborative shelter model for this community going forward. And it extends beyond YCAP as the sole provider. We did have construction repairs to help increase capacity. Um, the reference of the cots in the rooms is true. We absolutely used cots in the living rooms because we had upwards of thirty-five people a night. As we have moved away from being in the site, we have had upwards of fifty at the church. So this problem is not going away and will not be solved with sixteen beds or twenty-four beds. It will require multiple service providers in the community and I believe that it will require YCAP and Community Wellness Collective, Collective working together. Going forward. So to be clear, I am fully in, all in and in support of YCAP running a navigation shelter in Newburgh. I'm also in support of their leadership and the conversations that were shared today. I also acknowledge the concern of neighbors in this room tonight and understand more conversation is required for all residents to feel safe. I hope YCAP recognizes the importance of inclusion of all voices and most importantly, those that are in resistance. What I want to challenge the room tonight is that this topic clearly requires leadership that's willing to engage in heated, challenging and even confrontational dialogue. Community Wellness Collective takes the perspective that we will continue to support our houseless neighbors through our services at Northside Community Church in parallel to ADP. Newburgh and hope to repair our working relationship for the betterment of our community in months to come. So I hope as a planning commission, you will approve their application and that, um, we can work together to continue to have community conversations. Um, around how we can make, ensure that the neighbors, um, feel an enhanced level of safety. And I do believe that Community Wellness Collective can be a part of that conversation.
I, I have a question. Sorry. Um. You mentioned the church or, or you, is it, you're referring to the property as the church is six one five north?
No, um, when. Construction began and we were still in a subcontract with YCAP, we moved into a temporary location. So we took our services and we're still in full operation and. Plan to continue at Northside.
Which is not the six one five north.
Correct.
Okay. So that was the one that was the forty bed was the different location.
Yep.
Fantastic. And you mentioned community leader. Is that? Your position? Are you on the city council?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Microphone.
Hi, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm so conflicted, but I, I just had to ask. Why do you think you're supporting this? Building a modular and, and increasing their. Presence on that corner. Why do you think that it would be a good thing to make it larger in that neighborhood as opposed to taking? Uh, making a larger facility that is someplace less residential, someplace more commercial or industrial. Where the people would not be in the neighbors' yards or talking or leaving. Things. For them to find.
I don't know if. I've developed relationships with some people in this room, um, through this whole process. Um, and I, I can't say that, um. I don't understand. Where your, where it sounds like your question is coming from or where they're coming from. I do think that it's, it's concerning and troubling and. Um, frankly, we were not aware of some of these neighbors' complaints, um, until pretty recently. And that makes me sad that we didn't know that to address it earlier. Um, Matt is our director of operations and I know works all day, um, on any complaint that's coming. Um, but I do really, I believe that why, that this model is how we're going to address. Fully supporting a human individual to secure work, get mental health services, you know. Do I think this is the right location? If I could pick any place in Newburgh today, absolutely not. Land is hard.
That's exactly what I wanted to hear because that is the point, not what they're providing. And not the need. But the location.
Sure.
Do we expand that location? Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Wright, um, during the community symposium, you mentioned that you guys have a vehicle now and that you pick up people. Can you elaborate on that a little bit more?
Yep, we, um, have purchased a van that we pick up, um, Newburgh residents that are in need of shelter and transport. To the church nightly and drive off the church property every morning. Um, so it doesn't, you know. One hundred percent ensure that they're not going to come back. Um, but we do do that to ensure that there's not wandering throughout the neighborhood. Um, and the neighbors have been very appreciative, appreciative of that.
Right. This is for the site for a Northside church that will be, uh, the cottage clusters will be going into?
No, there's too many north churches in this town, but North Valley Friends Church is where the cottage clusters are going. Northside is over, um. Closer to, um, the George Box baseball fields.
Um, how many, uh. Cottage clusters will those provide?
At, at North Valley Friends, I am not qualified to speak on North Valley. Um, we're within the church building and I think we hope to. Continue to operate out of Northside at, as overflow to, um, the YCAP Harvest House Shelter when they open is our, is our plan. Um, because we do believe just from what we've seen over the last two and a half years, when we were averaging thirty-five per night. That twenty-four will not solve the entire problem.
Thank you, Councilor Hallman. I really appreciate your comments and your two minutes. Thank you.
So I have a quick question. So is your, um, church offering low barrier housing or not housing, but overnight? Uh, support for these people?
Currently, I, it would be classified as low barrier. Um, we, um. Also have very similar policies and procedures in place induction, um. Induction, uh, conversation that we undergo with each client that's coming in nightly, um, and, you know, it's around respect and safety. Um, so. Very similar to what, um, executive director, um, from YCAP shared, um, we would take a pretty similar. Approach and stance to that. And we do, um, we do collaborate very well with, um, the Newburgh Dundee Police Department. Um, and are, you know, cooperative to any requests that they have of us.
And is it just an open area with cots? Or how does that work?
Yeah, correct. Right now it is. It's one open room, um, and we just line out cots for them each night and then we. Fold up the cots and clean up in the morning before we do breakfast and everybody gets breakfast and we bring them off the property.
And then, um, yeah, I heard that you, uh, take the different individuals to the church and then you take them. Back afterwards, the next morning, where, where do they, where do they, where do you take them to? I guess is my question.
Um, originally we were meeting at the shelter, um, the six one five, when we first moved into the church. Um, but due to neighbors' concerns, we have switched that out of the neighborhood and we meet at a public parking lot downtown in Newburgh and we bring them back to the exact same public parking lot every day.
So would part of the problem be with? Um, so when did that change? I guess is my question, that you started taking, um, the unhoused people to the parking lot?
Uh, we pretty much started that. We moved into the church in April. We bought the van in May. We'd have a few repairs done on it. So I believe about mid-May, we started running the van.
I wonder if some of the problems in the neighborhood have decreased a little since May.
I don't, I don't.
I believe so. I mean, again, we have them twelve hours a day, um. And they're off the street for twelve hours a day while they're with us and we, you know, we're able to control what they do then, um, as far as after they leave our care, we try to do what we can, you know, to make the community feel safe. Make our people feel safe, make the church feel safe. Um, and that's why we started operating the van.
But it does make me feel concerned if, you know, Patty is saying that it hasn't decreased because we haven't been operating out of the house since March. So. You know, we've been off of the property for a significant amount of time now. Now, so.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no more questions, thank you. And, um. Have one more here that was, um, dropped off and, but it's requested to be read. So I'm going to go ahead and read that really quickly here. And it does look like it's kind of starts off mid-sentence. So I'll just read as is, and it's just. Degree at which she quickly left. Later I learned from the police that she is homeless, is a meth user and frequent harvest house. I came home one day to find a trash grocery cart with bottles and articles of dirty clothing scattered all over my property. A middle-aged woman with a dog entered onto my property and was peering through my building structures. Pulling on the handles of them, I can only assume to steal something. Another evening, a homeless man camped out on the railroad one evening, lets his dog off leash, almost jumps over my fence in an attempt to attack. Attacked my brother's dog. Cops were called and he was escorted off the private property. The homeless man states he needed a place to let them run around off-leash and a place to sleep. I am awoken early one morning by a woman screaming for over thirty minutes as she rolled around in my neighbor's yard, scattering all her belongings across the yard. Cops were called for multiple people, woman as well known as homeless and mentally ill. And a frequent to the shelter according to PD. Most recently at one thirty in the morning, I was woken by a noise. Out of my front window and noticed a middle-aged woman who was staring over my cars, walking around them. She entered my property with an item of clothing. Over her mouth as if to hide her identity. She began snooping around my front door. I was alone and really scared. I knew I needed to confront her. I opened my front door. And blinded her with a bright flashlight. I told her this is private property and to leave, but she refused to leave. I threatened to call the cops and she finally moved. Police were called, cops knew her as well, a homeless individual. I've heard from different neighbors of their experiences, a homeless woman unlawfully entering a home in the middle of the day. For an unknown amount of time before coming out the back door where owners were gardening. The woman was clearly under influence of a substance. And homeless, as she stated, she was looking for a place to sleep for the night. And thought she was a harvest house. A different neighbor was woken up at midnight. To someone talking loudly peeked out of his front door. And was frightened to find a homeless middle-aged man sitting on his front porch. There's also been accounts of hypodermic needles left on the sidewalk of College Street. Random paraphernalia left on neighbor's property. And homeless individuals passed out with brown bags in their hands of local. Children's play parks. My concern is that as a neighbor of Harvest House that I want to stress. To this planning committee in hopes he will consider when considering whether or not to. Approve the renovations is that an increase of eight beds may. Seem like not a big deal, but it will make a major difference in bringing more of the activity I just mentioned above. More beds is not all that YCAP says they will do. YCAP will increase onsite services. Both in the evening by adding more beds and in the day by adding cert- onsite services from eight to five P M. These additional services, hours of operation, as well as increase of beds will attract more and more homeless store neighborhood. Which unfortunately often leads to criminal activity. I'm also concerned about the lack of quiet time we would have, massive line that swarms hours prior to the opening. Of the evening walkout shelter and how the increase of traffic. From eight to five P M will not be safe for our children who around these times are walking to and from school. Outside playing with their friends or riding bikes to David's Market. I am concerned that YCAP does not. See that their business is, will attract more and more homeless store neighborhood and does not have a solid plan. As to what they will do if that happens. YCAP's attitude is, we'll just have to wait and see if that works. That is not a good enough answer for me to support the shelter and reopening. Harvest House opened by YCAP has been operating quietly for about thirty years. Harvest House, opened by Y Cap, has been operating quietly for about thirty years, serving women and children, exalping domestic violence. However, this is not the population I've seen lined up every night to enter in the last few years. What has changed? Y Cap says it wasn't them in control the last few years, yet Y Cap maintained ownership. Why did Y Cap let it get out of hand? Now Y Cap wants to make it right. Something doesn't smell right. If the shelter reopens, I predict things will get worse. Residents will leave. Because their neighborhood doesn't feel safe, loss in property value, increasing crime, vandalism, theft, homeless camps. And homeless arriving to the area. Harvest House has been shut down for several months and anticipated. Of renovations and it's been really peaceful here. When the shelter was open after hours, there would be many homeless transients lingering on around their property. I guess I can't help but wonder how it will look adjacent when they open with more beds. I do care about our community and want the very best for all to live here. I have seen what my hometown of Portland has turned into and I know this is how it starts. I think most of the lies there is. More often than not, a direct correlation between homelessness and drug use, criminal activity, vandalism, theft. And I don't care attitude. I think it's important to think about what is at stake. Not just for people in need, but for the hardworking class of Newburgh who sadly will be left picking up pieces. I am worried for the children who will grow up here and who will ultimately will raise their babies here. What will their neighborhoods be like in the future? I don't know the exact solution to this growing problem, but maybe we can start with further discussions on the topic before pushing this forward. Y Cap's no barrier shelter does not belong in a residential neighborhood. Bottom line, we need to shut it down. And relocate it to a more industrial part of town. I think we need to take our feelings out of the equation and look at the facts. Let's look to our neighboring city of Portland, for example, of where we might be headed. Let's think about what future we want to see, what will be best for all Newburgh residents. This is our chance to save Newburgh and not let it face the same fate as Portland. Newburgh Planning urged you to not approve that. Proposal. And I apologize, I didn't say the name. That was for Harley Carmichael. So that's um all of those public comments. We would like to give Y Cap a chance for rebuttal, but first I'd like to um say that we take a ten-minute recess. Uh and then as soon as we come back, we'll have Y Cap come back up for a rebuttal. All right, if we could get um going again and we go up and go ahead and call the uh applicants up for rebuttal.
Um I want to thank everybody for taking the time to um bring more conversation to this topic this evening. And um for the opportunity to come back up and add a few additional comments. Um Y Cap does take all of the feedback seriously and is something that we'll continue to have conversations around internally. Um as we work with any of our programs. Uh I did want to address uh the concern about Y Cap's presence during COVID. And why the scenario of Y Cap stepping out of the shelter did take place. Um I did share with the planning commission that during COVID, we were asked to step into emergency motelling. Um this was an endeavor that we thought would be less than twenty beds for about ninety days. Um we all know that COVID went far beyond that and the need for people to um. Have supports that were homeless was greater. So we were in the height of doing emergency motelling. Um also during that time, I was in conversations with Newburgh leadership, including the mayor. Um and other shelter providers through our housing staff. And they had made several requests of Y Cap to uh hand the shelter over um to somebody who lived in Newburgh. Uh not Y Cap as a countywide agency, but somebody who was on the ground, member of the community. Uh that might be able to capacity build and expand their services locally. With both of those components uh in front of us, uh Y Cap did make the decision to focus on. Doing the emergency motelling and merging uh into the turnkey opportunity that was in front of us. And we leased the shelter with a very clear lease contract. Um free of charge. Um and we covered utilities and supplies. And extended that to a shelter provider, which was known as Newburgh Emergency Shelter, seeking their five oh one C three at the time. They had been an inclement weather shelter provider, um I believe at the Zion Church and would be losing their space. But we're very trusted with their volunteers and on the ground here in Newburgh. We are not allowed to subgrant state funds to an entity that is not a five oh one C three. Um which is why we sought an additional Newburgh partner. Um who held a five oh one C three to sponsor Newburgh Emergency Shelter in this transition. Uh that partner was Community Wellness Collective, who held the five oh one C three and said that they would like to step into that role. Therefore, we leased the building to Community Wellness Collective. Um and we granted, did a subgrant of a portion of our state funds for emergency shelter. That um supports the model of shelter that they were doing. To support part-time staffing, because at that time they were a volunteer-run model and did not have staffing to Community Wellness Collective. And in the first year, they worked on that transition with Newburgh Emergency Shelter. In the end, they decided not to seek a five oh one C three and Community Wellness Collective said for the second year. Uh they would like to be the sole provider with the intention of building out community wellness's capacity. Uh as a service provider within the shelter community. Um this was why Y Cap made the decision to step out of the shelter and try something different. Um and in those scenarios, the service provider that we worked with had very clear lease. Uh that they signed and agreed to, and they had very clear sub-recipient agreements related to the funds and the services that those funds could support. Um the second item that I wanted to address was um concern for. Y Cap uh expanding the shelter beds and having uh issues in managing potentially those shelter beds. Uh we've heard here tonight that throughout the years of Y Cap managing the shelter, there was not a concern for the operations. Um we did house uh primarily families and veterans, but we also did house individuals when space was available. But it was not night-by-night shelter. The screening process was the same. We did not do extensive background checks. We did not do drug testing. We had similar policies and rules in place. But shelter guests were allowed to stay and work with a housing case manager on a long-term basis versus a nighttime basis. Um in resuming operations and adding additional staffing oversight and higher-level resources. And opening our shelter up to families, veterans and individuals in a similar manner. We feel confident that Y Cap can maintain um the safety of our property. And the, what happens there and keep good relationships with the neighbors. Again, we've also successfully done this with the turnkey model. Um one other item that I will address before I hand it over to uh Laverne Pitts. Is uh we have endeavored to do as many conversations as we can with the unfolding timeline. Of the availability of these funds and this transition and how quickly it is moving. Uh we do understand that we have not been able to reach every single person that may be in a four, five, six, seven, eight block radius. Of the property and we have started with those who were closest to the property. Um with individual outreach, we have started with a few small meetings specific to construction and to land use. But for Y Cap, the conversation does not stop there. Uh we are in communications right now, trying to secure a larger space where we can host more individuals. And we can broaden the conversation around Y Cap's operations and general concerns around houselessness in the community. We anticipate this date being secured within the next two weeks. And we will do our best to open that up to that broader range of folks who could not participate in some of our initial smaller meetings. As we have been building this process out. Uh with that, I want to turn it over to Laverne Pitts.
Thank you. Um I would like to address some very specific concerns that were raised during the conversation um and and during the. Comments that were made um against this particular um shelter and the expansion of the shelter. Um one was comments related to parks and park concerns in and around Newburgh. And I would like to mention that throughout Yamhill County, parks are an area that are of concern with um homeless populations. It is not merely parks with, that are near this shelter, but it is in, in general parks. To the point where uh McMinnville recently passed an ordinance stating that RVs were no longer allowed to be parked. In park, parking lots because of the issues of homelessness in McMinnville. So I would state that mu- many of the issues that were brought up here tonight regarding homelessness. Were in more, in more of a general nature of issues related to homelessness and not necessarily specific to the shelter. Um just because a park happens to be near the shelter, doesn't mean it's impacted more than Joe Dancer Park. That often has RVs parked up and down Marsh Lane in McMinnville. Or any of the other parks in our area that also have unhoused individuals um in our communities. And so homelessness again is a systemic issue within Yamhill County. And parks are again a logical location where people tend to gravitate. So I also wanted to bring up um that there were questions in regards to. Items being broken into within the last few weeks. And I would like to reiterate that this property has not been utilized as a shelter since March fifteenth. And as a result, again, these issues are much more related to systemic homeless issues, not specific to the shelter. But concerns that the community has overall in regards to homeless who are within the boundaries of the community. I would suggest that the work that we are planning to do at this navigation center will in fact mitigate those issues. Rather than exacerbate those issues. If we have a more robust operation and we can help provide these pathways. Into the turnkey program in McMinnville or into other opportunities for housing. That are more intensive, that are more supported with behavioral health, substance use disorder support and so forth. That that will actually mitigate these problems rather than exacerbate these problems. Having the eight additional beds means that some of the people who are outside at night won't be outside at night. Um the other thing I would like to point out is in Y Cap's management of the facility. The doors will be closed at eight P M and will not be opened again until eight A M. There will be no in and out. There will not be people who will leave the shelter and be able to come in and peer in somebody's window. Because they will not be able to exit the shelter. Um if there's an emergency, obviously we exit the shelter in group. But there will not be an in and out process during the night. Once they are in, they are in. That is the way it's gonna operate. We are also looking at changing operations. The way it's been operated for the last couple of years was there was a line that was at the facility. We are not going to be doing that. We are going to be logging people in through our coordinated entry process. And other processes that we had used previously, as well as some other ones that we're working on. In order to have people scheduled for that night, so there should not be additional people just sort of in the area hoping for a bed. We have also a dedicated vehicle, a dedicated van for the new um navigation center. Um that will be available. We also have one that has ADA accessibility in case that is also required. So those are resources that we are bringing to the table that are new resources that were not available previously. So I want to make sure we cover all of those, um all of those issues. Um finally, I would like to um. I would like to make one comment about where this property is located. This property is located, yes, adjacent to a residential area, but also adjacent to an industrial area. It is located beside a railroad track, beside an ODOT facility, and there is a business across the street. So there is not a neighborhood completely surrounding the property. There are other elements that are within that area. And I would say that there is not a perfect place anywhere for a shelter. If we tried to place this shelter in any other location, you would have these exact same comments from any neighbors within a reasonable. Space of that facility, making these same comments, just like you have questions about any other sighting. Of structures, civic structures within a community, such as a fire department with fire alarms. A police department with police cars, any even schools. Some people don't like to live near schools because of the lines at three thirty and not being able to get to their homes. So there's always issues that neighbors have with particular facilities that are within their neighborhoods. And I would say that we are gonna work really hard to mitigate any impact that our facility has on this neighborhood. To bring it back to the pre-COVID levels, so that it wasn't even an issue and people were not even aware of its existence. So I would say that we have shown in the past that we've been able to do so, and I would ask for your faith and trust. That we are coming to again with a plan in order to preserve that with full staffing at night during the day. That are trained extensively. We're happy to give you all the training materials that we provide for the staff members, which include de-escalation. As well as how to handle individuals who are experiencing mental health and substance use disorders. To be able to address those issues in a holistic way. You have any questions, we'll be happy to respond.
Yeah, I have a quick question. Um pre-COVID though, were you not serving, it was my understanding that you were serving families? Uh uh am I correct in that as opposed to um now you're serving? Just low barrier, anybody as it were?
It was always a low barrier shelter. It was, the shelter was always low barrier. Um the way people were entered into the program was through our coordinated entry program.
Can you tell us more about that?
Okay, uh coordinated entry. So coordinated entry is, so. Y Cap actually runs the coordinated entry program for all of Yamhill County. So we have a phone number as well as an online screener where people submit their information and we take that information. And we put it into our system and we have people call. We have four to five dedicated people who return phone calls every single day. To people who are calling in, looking for services, looking for, for shelter. Um as well as rental assistance and help with their car and all sorts of other things. Typically, we have um a couple of hundred phone calls a week related to needs within our county. We have operated that coordinated entry line now for five, almost six years. And so that is one mechanism through which individuals will be determined to be in the shelter. Also by having case managers there during the day, we will be able to say, okay, well, this person needs a night. A shelter for the night. We will take that information and set aside that bed for that person. We are also looking at partner agencies within the area, churches and other locations. Um that have the ability to also say, okay, well, this person's getting referred in for a night, for that night. So that's one of the things that we are looking at doing in terms of how this facility would be managed differently, so that there won't be a line out the door. Um because we don't want a line in, in the, we don't want a line. That's not our goal. Because again, you can run into issues with capacity at the site and you don't want that happening at seven thirty at night. So if there's a way for us to, to set that up all ahead of time through these variety of mechanisms, that's our goal.
And just to add to that, um for clarification, coordinated entry's primary focus is for those who are unhoused or precariously housed. In some format. So while we screen for as many services we have, the focus is that. Um and over the years slowly, uh we have been able to work with partners to receive training on coordinated entry. Again, we're younger than many other counties who are participating in this since we started in twenty seventeen. But we do have partners who can be trained in coordinated entry and assist folks that they are meeting at their sites of service. Or at their other shelters to use this system as well. So we do encourage that participation and that. That those efforts will continue with Y Cap to enhance coordinated entry. Um the name of our coordinated entry screener, if you haven't seen it online, is called Any Door Yamhill. Um and that's the online screener. Um the name of the Newburgh Shelter, as we are rebranding and the equivalent one of McMinnville will be called Any Door Place. McMinnville and Any Door Place Yamhill, as we see it as an extension of connecting people um through coordinated entry.
We also are looking to our shelter providers like Loving. Uh other shelter providers like Loving or um Second Street Drop-In, other places um within Newburgh. To be able to provide referrals in, to say, we know we have somebody who needs a night. And then be able to log those in so that we have a list of who we're, who we're going to be serving each night. So that's, that's the goal. It's gonna be a night-by-night shelter, yes. Um but our goal is not to have people lined up out front.
The night-by-night is the major difference. Is that correct?
Um night-by-night is a specific way that we have to operate based on state law regarding navigation centers.
No other questions? I have a question. Uh did you explore alternatives to expanding the existing shelter? Uh what I'm trying to get at is you mentioned uh the house that I think how much it had appreciated in the last ten years across the street that closed recently. Has Y Cap considered taking advantage of the increased value of the current location and selling it? And going to a location where you can actually increase capacity by more than eight? Uh commercial, there's a, uh there was a development that was approved uh the last meeting or the meeting before. Um and one of the things that they uh changed. And one of the things that they changed within their. Plan was the removal of commercial. Or retail space. And the reason they did that was because there's so much vacant available space. So. Take advantage of, and nowhere in Yamhill County, to my knowledge, have residential property values increased more than Newburgh. So if you want to stay in Newburgh, sell it and buy a bigger. Facility where you can actually take care of more people and it's not in a residential neighborhood or. Take it to another location in Yamhill County where you could buy oodles of. Additional space for the money you would get for that house.
That's a, it's a good question. Um, we did take that into consideration, actually for for both sites for McMinnville and Newburgh when it came up. However, the deadlines on the funds that we have to operate through our grants and the state funds available. Would not allow us the time to go through that process and potentially secure a site. Do the renovations or build from scratch and meet the deadline of starting operations and using that so that the timeline is very fast. These are the only actionable sites we could identify to move forward on at this time.
I, I would like to also reference the amount of funds that we are receiving. From the state into these communities are in the millions of dollars. The amount that we could sell this facility for is in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. So the amount of funding currently at risk. If we, so in that situation, we would not be able to meet the state's deadline regarding these funds. Therefore, we would not have received. These funds. If we had tried to sell the property, if we had tried to sell the property, buy another piece of property, build a structure. The timeline involved would not have allowed us to secure the funds to be able to do the work. And the amount of money from that particular. Building would not have even bought a property within Newburgh. Given the increasing property values throughout the community, selling an appreciated property. To buy another appreciated property does not gain us anything in the process. And in fact, it then would preclude us from being able to get the currently three million dollars. That is currently being brought in from the state in the Yamhill County to address homelessness at this time.
One, I would correct what I mentioned before. I understand property values. If you're selling a house in Newburgh and buying another house in Newburgh, well, you're going to face the same appreciation. But commercial property has not, uh, close, has not come close to appreciating like red, let me finish. Uh, like residential property has. So there is the opportunity within Uber to get more bang for your buck. With an exist, existing commercial. Properties. Now I understand what you're saying about, you know, the state funds that. Use them now or lose it or whatever. Does that prevent you from now that you've taken those funds to then? Explore a path of relocating that facility to a place that could actually house even more people.
These funds are designated for the renovation of the facility in Newburgh from a shelter to a navigation center.
And that's going to take millions?
It's across multiple projects. The funds that we have for, um, so the total cost for the ADP McMinnville project is over three million dollars. And the total project here just for the renovation and the work that we're doing is over six hundred thousand dollars. For what we are doing on this property, which will include the modular. And then in addition to that, we have staffing that is being funded through the state for the increased staffing for this site. And all of those are based on a finium basis. So the funding that we receive from the state necessitates the actions that we are taking tonight. And so it precludes some of the more creative solutions. Because in addition to if we purchase a commercial property, we would then have to go through a land use process. To address the zoning of that property as well as the upgrades needed and so forth to be able to transition that property from a commercial property. To one where individuals could be housed safely in a. In a shelter environment. And so all of those funds would then need to be from someplace else.
I understand what you're saying and I understand the restrictions that were placed on you by the state. But I think it's worth at least a conversation with the state to say. You know, we need the money for any number of things. Would, would you grant us an exemption and take the funds and then so that we can get more bang for our buck? And go to a community that has not appreciated as much as Newburgh. You could get infinitely more property. Including residential in areas where they have not increased like Newburgh.
We engaged in multiple conversations with the state due to complications across our navigation center developments and they were very clear. That due to the nature of these legislative dollars, they had no wiggle room and no budging for us. They only recently extended part of the funding for an additional six months. And that is a drop dead date. So we advocated for that on a multiple levels. We had that conversation with the city of McMinnville as well as we engaged with the state partner, but we, we did not have any ability to adjust that.
Okay. And I just want to wrap up. I, I, what you, I think most everyone agrees that what you're doing is very laudable. It seems to be where it's being done is the issue. And as I mentioned earlier in the meeting. The House Bill two oh six specifically provides. That we can turn this request down if it poses any unreasonable risk to public health or safety. I can't ignore all the things that the residents, the majority of residents have testified about. Whether it's trespassing, people going in their home, feces in their yard, theft. Ever, I've heard a lot of mention about children. Uh, I've heard that the term safety more times than I can count tonight. I think if I were not to be supportive, it's not because I'm not supportive of what you're trying to do. We also have an obligation to the people that live around there. Maybe a no win scenario.
And I, I will just add one final comment in response to that. I appreciate your transparency with us. There is no perfect place as we've mentioned before, and we work a lot with folks. Such as the librarians in both this community and others who no longer have a safe library. Because individuals have to frequent there. And so we are trying to approach this with a model to create a safe space. And also pervert, preserve other public spaces such as a library where children frequent during school. There are field trips, community members would like to use. We hope that by the creation of navigation center, we make a slight improvement in some of the other spaces. That the city and the community also hold dear. Again, no perfect solution. We anticipate challenges on all fronts. Some we may have some control to make. Uh, refinements in and respond to as we move forward. Some may not be fixable immediately. And again, we will have conversations about those. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wright. How does measure one ten with the, the passing of drug use? Or allowing drugs in the state of Oregon? Prior to that measure being passed, did you have this kind of problems coming forward?
Specific to substance?
Uh, substance abuse. Do you think measure one ten had an increase and do you think an amendment to that measure? Would be of help?
I don't believe that YCAP has any data or content that we can speak knowledgeably on to measure and increase. However, YCAP has participated in the Behavioral Health Resource Network that has formed in Yamhill County, which is extensive and being led by HHS. Where the dollars from measure one ten are now allowing us to address items within our services related to chemical dependency. And also dual diagnosis behavioral health. With the reinvestment of those dollars, we know chemical dependency and behavioral health were an issue before. We are seeing those and now we have some additional funding to infuse into our services as well as we're seeing a lot of partner agencies who can address those. Receiving very important funds for staffing and services that we will rely on heavy, heavily.
Thank you very much and. House bill he is talking about is something that was recently passed where you wouldn't have to. Deal with an issue of zoning residential is now allowed in commercial zones per a house bill. That was recently passed in the three hundred. You can Google it.
Okay, could you just remind me of the number?
It's around the three hundred. You can go to OLIS, O L I S and. Google recent house bills to do with commercial zoning residential and commercial zone. Is now being allowed. I don't have that document here with me this evening. Gotten to read it. And it does specifically gets a section in there about emergency housing. Thank you.
I do have one more brief question. Um, the previous group had mentioned that from their church facility that they have a pickup and drop off. Parking lot location when they have people leave for the day. Do you have a? Standard operating procedure in place if there's a, in an emergency situation, somebody does need to be removed? And if so, is it? Somewhere that can be away from the residential space? And if not, could you? Be doing that to make sure that people in an emergency situation are not being out the door in the neighborhood?
Our case managers do have a standard operating procedure to deal with emergencies and training related to that. Um, I cannot speak to the locations that have been identified or if we have a public space in practice. But it is absolutely something that our staff can consider and implement.
I think that would help some neighbors. So, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. At this time, I'll go ahead and close the public testimony portion of the hearing. And just turn to staff for any final comments or recommendation.
Staff has no final comments. Previously, we provided a recommendation to adopt planning commission order twenty twenty-three dash twelve.
Thank you. So let's open up for Commissioner debate and consideration.
I have a question for Doug. Commissioner Wright mentioned earlier something about the ADA parking. And I believe Doug, you referenced something about. This being code compliant under grandfathering it in from nineteen ninety. Now, it's my understanding that when I have dealt with these things in the past, that if, if a change or modification is being. Considered for the property, that they have to become compliant with things that have passed since such as ADA. And is that the case for this?
The Newburgh Development Code does not have provisions on ADA parking. That is a process that's addressed through the building permit process. Thank you. Anyone else?
Commissioner Wright, Oregon Executive Order twenty-three dash zero four establishes statewide housing protection goal and HP Advisory Council. Established, they want to add six hundred low barrier sh- shelter beds in emergency areas and rehouse at least. Twelve hundred unsheltered households in emergency areas. The continuum of care has identified that Yamhill County is not listed, but Salem. And Marion and Polk County are neighbors to the south are on that, that list. Oregon is including in its counties need to align with federal strategies and resources that are available to prevent and end homelessness. That is in that executive order. So, um, even though we are not, uh, one of the things I did look at. Was a YCAP point count. And the reason that our county did not, um, or has not established an emergency order for houselessness with the state. Is, um, they have to follow a certain set of criteria. And one of those criteria, you have to have one of two things. And according to the statistics of those, you have to include twenty seventeen point data all the way to twenty twenty-two. But twenty twenty-one is missing. If you statistically take out twenty twenty-one and include the previous year, twenty sixteen. Between twenty sixteen and twenty eighteen, there were only ten people shy of actually a fifty percent increase. In this county. That would constitute an emergency. Problem in our county, but because of that missing data, it skewed and. I would hope that would be addressed at some point with the state. In a modification proposal to them. I see that we have a profound problem with. Homelessness, including our kids. One of the point and entry times is that the shelter does allow his kids. And I have seen that there are over. I think ninety-six homeless kids in one year unhoused and unaccompanied. And during my research. Fifteen days foundation has identified that after fifteen days, a child becomes. Subject susceptible to being on the streets permanently. In Polk and Yamhill County, seventy percent of homeless people identified that they were homeless as kids. So if we can use some of these shelters to help families with children. We are also helping some of the, uh, children now. And saving them from being in that population in a few future as well. Based on some of those statistics. Do any of the other commissioners have any comments of any other stuff? Any other studies, anything you'd like to bring forward? I did have a livability study. That we might want to take because we have talked about livability with our short-term rentals. And there is standard standing livability related concepts and definition research at HTTPS. W W research gate dot net publication three, four, five, three, six, three, two, one, one. And it has to do with related concepts and definitions of either natural or built up environments. This is a really good paper and I, I hope the other commissioners will read this also concerning our short-term rental issue. In the future.
I think, um, I don't know, like Chris, we, are you, are you done? Okay, um, you know, I look at Newburgh and we have a. A homeless population and it's, it's large. And. It seems to me. That this facility would add structure to supporting the population. I actually live very close to this facility. I, I live, I don't know, two and a half blocks away, maybe three blocks away, I guess. But I do think that. If we don't provide structure, then the problems on the street are likely to become worse, not better. There's a lot of homeless. Families and individuals that are around our library, around the community center, around where I live. And they need help and they're not just going to disappear if we. Don't put structures in place. I, I'm unsure whether or not we need to tie in an expansion. Of the facility with the navigation. I don't know if those two things are closely tied together. But I really do think that. I don't know. I, I, I just think that we need some structure and, and the navigation opportunity could provide that for Newburgh as a whole. When it comes to the house itself, obviously I live close by, so I'm very familiar with it. I think it would be great to take the open sign out of the window if that's still there. I think that's pretty obnoxious. But I also see that it is, it borders. An industrial area, which is what we've been discussing previously, and it does border a residential area. I've noted the YCAP say that they'll have two. People, staff who are trained, I'd like, and maybe I should have asked previously what the training would have been, but. Two staffed people or two, um, people who are fully trained overnight, their trauma informed. Many of these. People who are homeless or unhoused have experienced huge trauma. Up to five people during the day. I think it's something that we should. Very much consider. I hear your concerns with children. I very much hear your concerns with children, but I also agree with Y cap in that, you know, parks, yeah, people hang out in parks when they need a place to sleep. They just do. And it's not necessarily Jake with it could be any of the parks, and it probably is any of the parks around Newburgh. So, yeah, that's my perspective.
I agree completely. This is why this is such a hard topic. Because obviously you want to help these people, but does expansion of that particular site make it better that like the churches are getting involved? Those are large areas. They've got large parking lots. They've got lots of rooms. Does it make sense to say, okay, let's let's shove as much as we can into this little teeny spot in the middle of a neighborhood that's got a lot of children? Does it make sense to do that? And you've probably heard me talk before. I think the drug problem is huge and and I'm and yeah, who would who would argue? Yes, you want to bring the homeless children. When I was studying architecture, we for a term project, we did a teenage shelter. And it is important within fifteen minutes of them getting off a train or a bus to get them help or they get contacted by drug dealers or pimps. I mean, to be quite honest. So so those are huge things, but does it have to be? Does do you have to develop more in that little spot? Could that not go to other places larger?
I just think about the churches, and I know that there are several homeless families with kids in Newburgh. And I just think as a parent, would I just want to be in this large facility just with cot after cot after cot with my toddler or with my, I don't know, eight year old or whatever it happens to be? Or would I prefer to be in a house where at least I could be in a bedroom? Uh, yeah, it's tough. I don't know. It's really.
You're also talking about two different facilities. One's a church now ran by a harvest house that's separated. And then you've got Y cap who has taken back over their space.
It wasn't just, it was in the separate facility. It wasn't. Of course, the same was at the church, not that.
They're in separate facilities, and I think they might might be addressing a different populations to where Y cap has a population availability for rooms and stuff for families versus the other situation is cots and stuff. I do know that they have a plan. That church has a large property. I don't know how many acres, but they want to put in housing cottage clusters. But that will be another meeting, another time, if it even comes before the planning commission.
I understand that. If they cater to families in this residential house, in this residential neighborhood, if that was the majority of the people that they helped, I would go, yeah, that makes sense even. But that's not what I hear. Those aren't the guys that are hanging out in people's yards and going through things. Those aren't families with children.
This is true. And the the other the other shelter with the church has started opening up and functioning. I think it was April of this year. And my cap was closed down for a period of time, so nobody, yeah, you have a lot of people wandering around. Especially.
I may interject a little bit of point here and be the be the hard guy in the room for just a minute. There's a couple of things, a couple of points I like to make. There's one point is that with this issue, it's always an emotional issue. We're talking about the disadvantaged, the the people that have been victims of circumstance or victims of their own choice, and there's really suffering. But the other side of that is it's not really relevant to what we're doing here. We have a set of criteria that we need to follow. And we need to follow the law, whether we feel feel emotionally about that is something we need to put aside as commissioners. The second thing, and something that's not been talked about very much here tonight, I don't think, is that we as commissioners represent the people of Newburgh. We're supposed to be here and represent the interests of those people. Well, who's showed up to this meeting tonight? But the people of Newburgh. And what they've been saying to us is that this facility is doing some good, yes, but also probably a bit of a public nuisance. I mean, it being there is a light on and attracting these moths to torture metaphor and causing a lot of problems. I mean, something has changed in the last two years where it was doing good with very little, very little problems, and now it's becoming a lot more problems. And I don't think that anything has changed sufficiently to warrant that change, other than policies at this facility. So I question if expanding is the right thing to do. And I think we have, if we were to decide that way, a good criteria excuse is Commissioner Griffiths brought up about the term any unavoidable. If Commissioner, could you read that again? But the the section about that? Just just to make sure that we're on solid ground here.
That's good. I was on House Bill two zero zero six, section three, sub paragraph one F. It can, it will not pose any unreasonable risk to public health or safety.
Thank you. So we've had testimony tonight that there's been some, not just risk, but harm to public safety and public health. I mean, feces in the yards as public health, isn't it? Crimes committed, that's public safety. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Dale, Harvest House did rent it for the last two years, and they stopped running it, and that might have to do with the operational issues. And it's my understanding that they're no longer going to be running it and Y cap is taking it back over.
Okay, yeah, and yeah, so my two cents on, like so many people have said, it's it's a tough issue, but it's an issue that has to be addressed in hypotheticals. Aside like I think it's kind of disingenuous to suggest that they sell it and buy somewhere else with land values and things being like that. And I think it's important to note that, yes, it's it's a problem everywhere, but it's a problem that's better managed than, as Commissioner Newton Curtis pointed out, that it's better to have it managed than just to have it willy nilly in the neighborhood. If persons aren't in a program, there, I would think, much more likely to be committing the crimes, to be committing you know, the trespass and everything like that. And it seems from what I've heard from the Y cap people that they're presenting a program to have a handle on things where they're at. And that it's there isn't a perfect solution without probably state and national action and a lot of changes. But what they're proposing is at least a solution. It's at least a movement forward versus just kicking the can down the road. And one of the reasons so many people, so many communities have a problem is because everybody kicks the can down the road. And like you suggest, they could get residential property in a place outside of Newburgh. Are we serious? And we think they would, they could just go move into, say, Carlton and not have problems there. You know, so I think what they're what they're offering is a at least a step towards a solution versus just saying, well, we can't do anything about that, you know, so so we'll just put it down. So I I think what they have is it's it's a reasonable proposal and that they're not looking. They're they're actually looking at numbers that will be less than what the numbers were when they weren't managing it. And that that'll look more, and I get the impression they'll be more family focused with who they're helping. So I'm inclined to to support what they're wanting to do. Again, it is a it is a complicated issue, but that's, I I think it's an issue that won't get solved unless it's taken on.
If I may, I was gonna say that we moved to adopt the planning commission order two thousand twenty-three dash twelve, which approves the request for major modifications to CUP dash two ninety, design review and parking designation, if I'm not mistaken, with the consideration of exhibit B.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion?
I think Commissioner Wright, a second to motion.
Okay, there's a motion in a second. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Jeff Musso?
Yes.
Jason Dale?
No.
Chris Wright?
Can you come back to me, please?
Lainey Quinn? Yes. Sharon Capri?
No.
Mike Griffiths?
No.
Linda Newton Curtis?
Yes.
Chris Wright? Yes.
And I'm sorry, what was the count?
The vote was for yes, three no.
If the motion passes, thank you.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, absolutely. And next up, I have to ask the commissioners if we're okay with proceeding past ten o'clock. To take care of our pending business, we have two COPs for ones that continue, and so that won't take any time at all. The only thing I could see taking time is our discussion at the end about the short term rentals, but that's something we could continue.
I don't think it's gonna take long.
Yeah, so so, okay, so let's move on then to and again, thanks to everybody that attended and us as well. Again, it's it's a good, it's it's a topic that isn't going away, and I'm sure will probably be in front of us again, but so moving on, the next thing is conditional use permit approval to use a single family dwelling as a vacation rental home at three, two, three, eight East Province Court. And the applicant has requested that the public hearing on the case be continued. And they're asking for a continuance until September fourteen, twenty twenty-three at seven PM at the Newburgh Public Safety Building. And the entertainer motion could
Playing Commissioner Wright, I make a motion to continue CUP twenty-three dash zero zero nine hearing for three, two, three, eight East Providence Court, Newburgh, Oregon, to September fourteenth, twenty twenty-three at seven PM in Newburgh Public Safety Building.
I second the motion. Any motion in a second, a vote, please?
Jeff Musso?
Yes.
Jason Dale?
Yes.
Chris Wright?
Yes.
Lainey Quinn?
Yes.
Sharon Capri?
Yes.
Mike Griffiths?
Yes.
Linda Newton Curtis?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That motion is continued until the September fourteenth meeting. Next up is another conditional use permit. This one is CUP twenty-three dash zero zero one zero conditional use permit approval for use of a single family dwelling as a vacation rental home at eight, twelve, East Third Street.
Commissioners, my name is Play Down. I'm plan manager, and this is Leanne Waggoner. So this is her first presentation to your commission.
Um, I believe we need to have the language.
We'll go with that first, I think. Trying to trying to support the new staff in the room. First of all, Mr. Chair, you need to do a bias ex parte.
I do, absolutely. Back at me. Okay. So I'd like to request at this point, ask if there are any I'd like to read it.
I'll say it for you, Mr. Chair. Abstentions, bias, ex parte contacts, or objections to jurisdiction.
I'd like to ask, are there any?
I would like to say that I am, I do live in very close proximity to this property. I pass it daily, but I will not let that affect my judgment.
There we go. So it would be abstentions, bias, ex parte contact, and objections to jurisdiction. If yours is noted, are there any others? No, thank you. So now we're ready for the language.
ORS one ninety-seven, seven ninety-seven requires certain statements be made at the commencement of a public hearing. The applicable city and state zoning criteria must be listed. This means that we must advise you of the standards that must be satisfied by the applicant prior to our approval or denial of an application. The planning staff will list the applicable criteria during his or her presentation of the report. Persons wishing to participate in this hearing must direct their testimony or the evidence toward the criteria stated by the planner or other specific city or state criteria which you believe apply. You must tell us why the testimony or evidence relates to the criteria. Any issue which might be raised in an appeal, this case to the Land Use Board of Appeals, Lubbock, must be raised in person or by letter at the local level prior to the city approving or denying the application. The law states that the issue must be raised in enough detail to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond. This part of the law is known as the raise it or waive it requirement. If you do not bring it up now, you cannot bring it up at Lubbock. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval in enough detail to allow the local government or designate to respond to the issue precludes action for damages in circuit court. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing on an application, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The planning commission will grant such a request through a continuance or extension of the record.
Now you. Thank you. Now you're up, Clay. So this is Leanne Waggoner. This is, she's one of our newer assistant planners, although we have an additional assistant planner that's also here. And and yeah, so I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge that she's new to the team, but we're really excited to have her here and presenting in front of you today. So take it, Leanne.
Thank you, Clay. As he mentioned, I'm one of the new assistant planners. And tonight I will be presenting the case for a conditional use permit at eight, twelve, East Third Street. And I enter the entire staff report for CUP twenty-three, zero, zero, one, zero, and to the record. The owner and applicant for this request is Andre Koshuba. His request is to turn his four bedroom, single family home on East Third Street in Newburgh into a short term vacation rental. The zoning for this area is R two, medium density residential. And the applicable code sections for review of his requests can be found in sections fifteen point two, two, five, point zero, six, zero, and fifteen point four, four, five, three hundred to three fifty of the Newburgh municipal code. This next slide is an aerial image of the residence shown in red, showing its frontage on the East Third Street and South Meridian Streets and its adjacency to East Fourth and South Edward Streets. Next are clips from the zoning map, showing the home's context within the medium density zoning district R two. And likewise, it's adjacency to high density residential R three and the central business district C three to the north. The utilities map shows the house is also connected to the major water and sewer lines running along South Meridian Street. And also not shown stormwater flows to an adjacent curbside grate at the northeast corner of the subject property. And also not shown stormwater flows to an adjacent curbside grate at the northeast corner of the subject property. Looking at the criteria under which to assess the request by the applicant, we find the code sections mentioned previously. Importantly, section fifteen-point-two-two-five-point-zero-six-zero A in regard to the character of the dwelling in relation to the rest of the neighborhood. The single-family dwelling is a four-bedroom house with a two-car garage uh, with an additional parking pad behind for use by potential short-term renters. These characteristics are in keeping with the immediate immediate neighbors to the east, west, and south. Furthermore, it is noted that this neighborhood property is a short distance from the central business district of town, which would be convenient for vacation renters and would therefore meet the code requirements uh, stated in section fifteen-point-two-two-five-point-zero-six-zero B. Lastly, this section states in Criterion C that the proposed use is consistent with this code. And this includes Newburgh Municipal Code, Chapter fifteen-point-four-four-five, Article seven, which we will look at next. Highlights for this section of code are as follows. Uh, first, that the vacation rental must be a single-family dwelling, which the house at eight-twelve East Third Street is. Uh, second, the dwelling must be registered with the city and the owner pay a transient lodging tax. And the owner has indicated that he will register with the city and pay the required tax. Third, to maintain standards, the owner is providing three off-street parking spaces, occupancy for eight guests. And that's no more than two persons for each bedroom. Uh, waste collection on each Thursday and will prohibit RVs or any other temporary shelters on the premises. And lastly, that the owner acknowledges his responsibility to post con- contact information for himself, the police, vacation rental standards, maximum occupancy, and Thursday as the garbage pickup day. In conclusion, staff is recommending that the commission move to adopt Planning Commission Order twenty-two-three dash eighteen with conditions approving conditional use permit, CUP twenty-three zero-zero-one-zero for a vacation rental home at eight-twelve East Third Street, Yamhill County Tax Lot, R-three-two-one-nine, A D, zero-zero-nine-zero-zero.
Okay, thank you. Uh, now we'll move on to um, public testimony. We can, we'll have the applicant first that will be allowed up to fifteen minutes, and then we will open it up to other comments, um, with a five-minute limit. And then the applicant will get a chance for rebuttal. So at this time, if the applicant would like to come forward and just uh, state your name for the record, is the applicant present?
The applicant was on Zoom, but they are no longer there.
They are no longer there, okay. So I do have, um, I do have two comments then. A public comment, so we'll move on to these, those for now. So um, Chris Anderson, would you like to come forward?
Thank you for your patience.
Yes, I have to be up at two-thirty. So I'm Chris Anderson. I live across the street. Um, I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but I think the plan is not fully uh, organized. There's, well, I don't know, can I ask you guys questions? Is is there a limit to the number of Airbnbs in a certain proximity or in the city?
There is not, and yeah, currently, and um, we do have, that's something we're discussing here coming up. So after this issues, but it's, there is no current um, limit on numbers or locations right now.
Right.
That's actually literally the next agenda item.
So, for example, in my case, there's currently an Airbnb directly next to it, so kitty-corner to the map that was shown. And then this is a a request for one across the street. Obviously, you know, there's a little concern with um, the proximity, number of Airbnbs.
It's a vastly different experience, sir.
Yeah.
Well, I don't see it, yeah.
Um, in such a close, close location, um. Also, uh, according to the MLS, that property is listed as a three-bedroom, two-bath house, not a four-bedroom, so a bedroom has been added to that. Um, parking in the driveway is not manageable. You'll stick out into the uh, sidewalk. I don't know how practical it is to ask guests to park in the garage. I guess if that's a requirement, you know, so be it. And then, I guess lastly, my question is, is this, the zoning changes, does that just allow for a vacation rental, or does that actually change the zoning classification?
It does not change the zoning of the property.
Okay, and then, okay, so then it wouldn't affect anything down the road with splitting the lot or another vacation rental if another house were to be built, if the lot were split?
No, the the request would is to allow a vacation rental at that
Okay.
location in that zone, if the property was big enough to partition off in the future.
Right.
That's a separate process in our development code, and they'd have to submit an application, have to be evaluated, see if it meets the criteria or not.
Right.
Um, so just to answer your other question too, Doug, correct me if I'm wrong here, but I believe they don't have to change the parking situation unless they do a substantial addition or modification of the property, like, you know, construction or something like that.
Outside of the current perimeter.
Right, yeah, well, or or, you know, like, say, tearing down part of the house and, you know, doing something different, or, you know, adding an ADU, or I don't know. Whatever.
Right.
But uh, this is just saying, okay, now it's going from one use to another. We're not changing the structure, so.
I would let Leanne respond to the parking issue. She was, she was the case planner on this one.
Yes, so the applicant stated that they will be using the two-car garage uh, for their two required spaces and that there is an additional third space behind the house, access to via the alley, so it's a it's essentially a standard-sized parking pad, and I guess it's something that they use currently.
Okay. Um, lastly, from uh, what's explained in this letter, I mean, there's just also a couple errors, for example, the garbage collection day. Quiet hours, is that nine or ten? I believe in the city code it's ten, but they list it as nine. Is that gonna be accurate? Is that gonna be held, you know?
Believe they can make that to their
What's that?
They, I believe that that's just like
That's their rules.
But if they're trying to be more accommodating, you could say nine rather than the mandated ten, it might be in an attempt to be more considerate of the neighbors.
Um, I guess that's really it, just regulations for uh, number of Airbnbs in a certain proximity.
Stay tuned.
Thank you, thank you. So, Tom Lutz, if you'd like to come up.
Thank you. Um, first off, I want to um, thank all of you for doing the work that you do. I know how difficult it must be, and I appreciate the fact that you uh, give it your attention and and sincere consideration. Um, unfortunately, we happen to live right behind this property. And our kitchen window, we, our, our house has a crawl space, and our kitchen window looks right down into that backyard. In fact, when the previous owner was there, we could tell her when she needed to get bananas, because her banana rack was hanging in her kitchen window, and if she was down to one, we'd say, it's time for you to go to the market. So I asked, I asked Mr. Koshuba um, to come and walk with me around the perimeter of the place and tell me where he's gonna put his fence and how high it's gonna be. And then there's a question of a apple tree which comes over into my roof and into my power situations. And he told me that his intent, he's gonna put up a fence, but I can stand in my kitchen window and look right over a six-foot fence, so I'm not real happy about looking in there and because there's gonna be a hot tub. And um, it's gonna be on Meridian Street side, it looks like. And um, it's just, it's just impinging. Now, I'm not against the project if he follows rules. And I just would say that um, whoever has the opportunity to talk to the codes and make sure the distances are are right and that sort of thing. Um, I would, I would really um, be interested in that taking place. Um, just for what it's worth, I think there's too many uh, short-term rentals in in the area. Uh, Chris just talked about the proximity there. He told me that his long-term plan, and he said, yeah, I'm gonna take that apple tree down, because I'm gonna put another house in there. It's a ten thousand square foot property, and there is enough room. And he said, I may make it an Airbnb. I may make it a single-house kind of situation. So, you know, he's still planning as he goes, and I'm a little concerned about that. That's why I asked you to um, hold him to whatever he says he does. Other than that, we've been here eighteen years in that house. I think we were the first ones to rehab the house in our, in our neighborhood. And since then, it's looking pretty good, so, yeah. That's all I have, any questions?
Uh, thank you, and just to point out, like, what Doug was uh, alluding to. Say he did put in another building and wanted to do an Airbnb, that'd be a separate permitting process for the, for the new amount of people
Right.
everything like that, so.
He had to figure out how, how he's gonna make money on that, that place. He's putting a lot of money into it now. Didn't need a renewed roof, new roof went on today.
Sir.
It's gonna be interesting.
Uh, for the concerns you have about the current project, I would suggest uh, 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 getting, getting with the code enforcement officer, make sure all the codes are followed, and he's a busy guy. But uh, you know, that's, that's basically your, your route for uh, you know, uh, if things, if things are not going right for that situation.
Right. And just, just for y'all's information, I am hearing impaired. It's a, it's a a Navy-induced situation. I could only understand about twenty-five percent of what was said here tonight. Okay, sitting out here, listening to Y-CAP and all this kind of stuff, and even y'all, when you talk. So I couldn't understand what Chris was saying, so. Speak up.
Boy, sir, sir, were you a bosom mate or a gunner's mate?
I was, I was a boiler division off.
Oh, oh, it's night, okay, I was a bosom mate and a little bit. So, understand, but but thank you. Okay, so um, we don't have the applicant to do a rebuttal, so we'll go ahead and close the public testimony portion of the hearing. And move on to if there's any final comment or recommendation from staff.
Uh, no, as stated. I have a question on the um, on that, because I thought it said here that it was with permission with attached conditions for approval of exhibit B, but I didn't notice that up there. Did exhibit B get addressed, and that's no longer a consideration? Looking at page seven of the staff report, and it said with the conditions of approval of exhibit B, and I just didn't notice that up there on the PowerPoint. So is that no longer a part of the commission requirement? Or am I, like, way off, because I'm super tired, my apologies? Um, I'm seeing exhibit B. Um, the conditions of approval, is that what you're speaking to? The um, with use, with the attached conditions of approval in exhibit B, but I just, I don't think I noticed on the PowerPoint. Oh, this live with the conditions of approval. So did that change, or? No, it's the same as in the staff report. Okay. Yeah.
No, always.
Okay.
Refer to the exhibit, typically is approve the order, and the order has the exhibit attached to it.
Okay, because it was all like that personal stuff, like about, so I just want to make sure that was. Thank you.
And continuing on, any um, more deliberations from commission?
Could I ask one question? Um, so it's four bedrooms, technically eight people. How do you figure the parking, or the cars that are allowed? It'd be parking in the street.
I don't see, I mean, when you go to an Airbnb, you barely park in the garage. Uh, the one in the back, it's currently a patio, and they just poured out the overhang. So, I mean, I guess somehow that class of type parking spot, it's in the alleyway. It's, was a three-bedroom house, but they turned it to a four-bedroom. You know, so the same, uh, uh, substantial work is to be that substantial work.
Could I ask if that change from three to four bedroom was code? I mean, does the bedroom have a window and a closet in it?
Knowledge of of that, um, yeah, they're, they're required to have two parking spaces, and they're offering that they have three. So they stated that two spaces in the garage, they could also use the driveway. I'm not familiar with, I haven't gone out and measured the driveway myself, but the garage and then the additional parking pad behind.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, you know, practically, I understand that's their, this is the requirements.
We're gonna have testimony, we need to
Yeah.
Come up to the mic, otherwise we can't.
Yeah, um, we'll have to reopen public comments, and if you're, if we're gonna talk to you and have testimony, so is that something we want to do? Or, are we good? Yeah, so, so um, we'll go ahead, if you had more questions, okay, okay, so we'll go ahead and leave it there. And um, anything else from commissioners?
Uh, no, it seems to be the two-car garage, the parking pad on the side that would initiate up to three cars at least, so one would be on the street if they rented it out to four couples or four people using cars at a different time. That doesn't mean it's always gonna be that way, but there would be uh, one potential car on the street um, with maximum, maximum occupancy.
Could I just ask, how, how is that? I mean, can you put a limit to the amount of cars allowed?
So, as, as Leanne had indicated, our code requires you have to have two parking spaces. They provided in their application, they have two, they meet the code. So that's, it's all way back to all of these conversations, they have, they're proposing three. Is that gets back to all of the conversations you had over the months about the standards. You can't change the standard, you can't change courses in midstream with an application. You have to follow the rules that are in place at the time they submitted the application. So on the space, required to have two. They've got at least two.
My question is, I can't
No. And parking in a street, it's not private parking, it's a public street, anybody can park in the street.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt CUP twenty-three dash zero-zero, zero-zero-one-zero uh, conditional per- use permit for eight-one-two East Third Street.
Commissioner Wright, seconds.
Can we have a motion in a second, a vote, please?
Jeff Musaw?
Yes.
Jason Dale?
Yes.
Chris Wright?
Yes.
Laney Quinn?
Yes.
Sharon Capri?
Yes.
Yes. Mike Griffiths?
Yes.
Linda Newton Curtis?
Yes.
The motion passes. And thank you, um, gentlemen, for coming down, and as they were kind of saying, the code is what it is, and and we need to apply for that, but it is very much on our radar, and if you want to stick around, we're gonna talk about it right now.
Mr. Chair, it is fairly
Mr. Chair, it is fairly late, but we really wanted to get into a fairly lengthy uh, topic.
Do we want to?
So. I'm, I'm mine. I, I spoke with the chair a couple days ago before the meeting, and so Clay has, has material. Here's what I would suggest to you. I'll just jump in if you don't mind.
Right in.
Is that you have the resolution for the moratorium. You also now have the research report. This gives you an opportunity to look at the research report. While you've got the resolution to request, recommend the moratorium, and you come back at your September meeting, and then you can further jump in. We have a shorter agenda. Remember, I won't be here. I'll be off sitting in a tree someplace.
Um, everybody needs targets. I mean, uh, no, I didn't say that.
There was a show about that, okay.
All right.
Um, is that, you can then come back and talk about it, because I think we have a, a couple of items for hearings that night, but that'll give you more opportunity. You'll be fresh. You've had a month to look at it, develop your questions, concerns, whatever. And you can talk with Clay about that.
I, I would just add to that, that if you come prepared to that meeting to so that we can transmit your comments as well as what you think we need more of, it will allow us to prepare to take those comments and that report to city council. Um, so be prepared to not only discuss it amongst yourselves, but to tell us what you want the city council to hear, as well as any feedback if you think there are things we can do in the interim, although we will be trying to move it, move it along relatively promptly. So, all those things would be appreciated.
A quick question, Mr. Quinn, as we are doing that, and we say we, say it does pass, and we do have this conversation, there are two vacation rentals on the schedule for that date. Would they then subsequently be postponed for a hundred and twenty days? No, okay, got it. Thank you.
No, is, that there's the whole process, is you make a recommendation, and there's a work session that has to be held with city council, because it's a policy issue. If they want to advance it forward, then Clay has to do a forty-five-day notification to DLCD before the council can hold a hearing and hold that hearing. And so any applications that come in between now and if the council did adopt an ordinance on a moratorium, would have to be processed under the rules in the code at the time, basically.
Thank you.
You have to remember, we're just toothless, so, so the city council is doing things.
So. If there's a motion that can be made to make that happen, what?
Well, and I, I wanted to note that those are two separate items. So you, the, the moratorium that was requested is on the agenda. Um, and then there's the research rental item, so if you wanted to open those and proceed promptly through those this evening, we could do that, so that those things continue moving forward.
I would like to do that, even though it's eleven o'clock, I would still like to do that.
Can we um, planning commissioner, Wright, move to uh, adopt a temporary hundred and twenty-day moratorium on processing STRs? Can we just go ahead and do that?
Is there a second?
Is that the way, do we still get to read everything, and then we can be next month?
It's not.
No, this isn't the kind of hearing. It's just, you are making a recommendation via a resolution to city council. I second it.
Hey, we have a motion in a second. A vote, please.
Jeff Musaw?
Yes.
Jason Dale?
Yes.
Chris Wright?
Yes.
Laney Quinn?
Yes.
Sharon Capri? Mike Griffiths?
Yes.
Linda Newton-Curtis?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously? Okay, so items from staff.
Only a couple of things. So the uh, Springbrook Master Plan Package, zone change, stream corridor subdivision, council approved that on July third, no changes from what your recommendation was. Uh, the urban reserve area expansion, city council held that public hearing. They've approved that. It's been forwarded on to the county. Hampton County Board of Commissioners needs to hold a public hearing, which will be scheduled, I believe, for August thirty-first. And then uh, Clay provided a presentation last Monday night on our downtown parking study, utilization study and report, and so no action was required by council, but uh, he provided that report to them. So they, they know that we do not have deficiency in parking in the downtown area.
Items from commissioners? We be adjourned. I will now adjourn the um, August tenth, twenty-twenty-three meeting of the Newburgh Planning Commission.